Good evening, everyone. We will start our regular work session for the Wilsonville City Council on September 5th at 5:40 PM. And I'll start by asking the council if you have reviewed the agenda and items on consent, any concern or comment there. Any councilor concerns? Okay. We'll start the pre-council work session, and our first item is Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Update with our Public Works Department.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Delora Kerber, Public Works Director. And I wanted to just kind of go over real quickly the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is on the consent agenda. So the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan is action that we can take to help us identify what disasters could occur in our community and what impact it might have on people, property, or the environment. And then these natural hazard mitigation plans are developed by various agencies. What we do is Clackamas County creates one, and then we have basically an addendum to theirs. It's our own standalone, but we refer back to their Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan as well. And now, in order to receive any pre-disaster grants, you need to have a valid, approved Natural Hazard Mitigation Document. All right. And these are some of the grants that we could apply for if needed. There's none that we're currently targeting, but it gives us opportunity to be prepared to be able to take advantage of grant opportunities if they come our way. This is just kind of a real quick kind of the process. So we have multiple steering committee meetings with various other jurisdictions within Clackamas County. We all get together, kind of talk about, you know, what does it look like generally for the county? And then each and every of the agencies go ahead and dive a little deeper as to what is happening with theirs. We get it up to a draft of the counties as well as the cities. We send it off to FEMA for preliminary review. They have given us a review, and they've said, "You're good to go, but now you need to adopt it." And once you adopt it, it goes back to federal FEMA, excuse me. So the plan goals are here. Of course, as I mentioned, property and life protection, figuring that out, how to make sure that we don't harm the natural environment, helping us with our emergency services, encouraging partnership amongst not only other agencies, but also the next goal, public awareness, making sure that our citizens understand and know the importance of being prepared for emergencies. And then the last goal is advancing the equity and inclusion. So these are a couple of the elements of the process that we go through. We first do a risk assessment. We look at what are the potential hazards that we could encounter? What is our vulnerability? Getting a little bit more descriptive of how the probability of what that's happening. And once we've identified that, then we think about how can we better best mitigate these potential hazards, such as strengthening our infrastructure, maybe changing our land use, which we've already done, but something where we would not allow people to build in a hazardous landslide area. And so this is one of the things. When's the best time to plan for an emergency? Before it happens. So this is kind of one of those predecessors of making sure that we are ready and best prepared as we can. One of the other important pieces, as I mentioned, is that you should update your Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan every five years, keep it active, and keep you eligible for grants. So this is a list of the hazards that we look at, drought, which seems to be more and more prevalent, a couple different kinds of earthquakes, as well as flood and landslide, extreme heat, which we are now experiencing today, as well as windstorms, winter storms, a volcanic event, hopefully not, and a wildfire, which is becoming more and more common. So what we do is we go through and we look at all the various hazards, and then we assign a point system to them. Of this particular one, its vulnerability is 60% of the score, and probability is 40% of the score. So the vulnerability is how many people or what type of environment would it impact, right? So you might compare something that happens, say, a water main breaks or something because of this, that isn't impacting two people or 200 people. So you have that vulnerability. And then the probability is the likelihood of it happening, knowing that that particular water line is, you know, 50 years old versus another water line that's only five years old. So there's an analysis that we go through. Each of these is weighted. We add them all up, and then we come up with a total threat score. And then that's how we come up with our ranking of what are the top concerns of the hazards that we have. So you have top, middle, and bottom. And like I said, once you have that information, then we go into coming up with mitigation strategies. Sorry, it's kind of small. This document is in the book. And so with that one, we identify, you know, what are some of the actions that we could take, which of the hazards would it help mitigate, and then who would be in charge of doing it? Is it ongoing, or is there a set timeframe with that? You know, where might we be able to get funding for it, and what is the cost of all of that? All right. So that was your less than five-minute review of the whole document. And so, sure.
I have a question, Delora. If you could go back a couple of slides, and I may be thinking about this wrong, but I'm thinking about a standalone power grid failure.
Okay.
Granted, all of those events would potentially affect a power grid, but as we know, sometimes we see an impact from a power grid stand. Has that been considered, or is that considered an effect?
So the failure is an effect of a hazard.
Okay.
So in that context.
Sometimes the hazard is just the power grid failure, which would be caused by, I guess, like a windstorm or a fire.
Right. Right. Yeah. So when we do the analysis, we are looking at things that the city can control. And so hopefully PGE and/or the other energy providers are doing the same analysis as to, you know, what are the potential hazards? Where are their weak points? So that they are helping to, you know, strengthen those.
Thank you for the clarification.
I was reading on page 42, the draft plan, basically jurisdictional addenda, where it's listing all of the cities that apparently have draft plans coming as well.
Mm-hmm.
That's quite a list. I'm glad to see that. Have you had any in your work feedback from any cities that don't want to do this and why they don't? Or has that not been part of the?
People who have not participated, not really, because we don't know who they are. But I would imagine if there's any that aren't participating, one is maybe they're not familiar with the importance of that, or maybe they just don't have the staffing needed to be able to do it.
It goes from small to pretty large cities, and even Clackamas River Water Addendum.
I have a question. On the grants that you mentioned, are those grants to be like cleanup-type of grants, or is it more proactive to prevent problems?
It's more proactive is to prevent. And so with that, with the various grants, there we go. So these might be ones where you would apply for something that you would strengthen your, you know, a building type of thing could be, or it could be to have something that may be an early warning system for wildfires. It's those types of grants that occur before the disaster happens to help you mitigate the impact of that hazard.
Do you have any idea what the value of those grants would be worth to the city? Why, I guess that would emphasize the importance of putting together a plan like this.
Yeah, not off the top of my head. And grants will fluctuate from year to year as to how much money is available and what the type of grant is. I will say that the flood mitigation assistance, I mean, that's something that keeps coming up with floodplain insurance and all of that, so, but I don't know the value.
Yeah. I didn't really expect you to, but I just thought if you did, it'd be nice to know. Thank you.
This is maybe, oh, maybe a bit of an adjacent question to the particular material, but I wonder if you could talk to me a little bit about the collaboration between and among these different jurisdiction groups, all of the addendums, you know, that are being put forward as part of this plan. But of course, in a large emergency, everyone needs to be coordinated and working together. So can you explain a little bit about how the groundwork for that is put forward through creating these plans?
Yeah. So what happens typically is you have, you know, a local agency that then rolls up to the county, who then rolls up to the state, who rolls up to the feds, right? And so pretty much all of those other agencies we work with on a regular basis just for general planning for emergency preparedness outside of this. I mean, we will meet on a regular basis and have those conversations. This was just one of the other venues in which we're looking at how each of us within Clackamas County, we have some many similarities, but we have some uniqueness as well. So we were meeting with that, with them on that. I know that whenever the county is looking at doing a training exercise, we try to participate with those if we have availability to do that. And I'm going to make a shameless plug for our very own City of Wilsonville Emergency Preparedness Fair is going to happen this Saturday, September 7th, at the Bouger Sign Barn between 10:00 AM and noon. And I hope anybody hearing this comes and joins us.
Thank you. I have one more question. On page 41, it talks about Attachment B is the Public Involvement Summary, which does talk about the Clackamas County seeking public input on that. So how is, how does that play out in Wilsonville or at each jurisdiction?
So I believe you, it should be showing, oops, it should be showing you both what Clackamas County did and then what Wilsonville did. Is that not in the document?
I'm on...
Maybe flip one more page?
Maybe, and I'm a, this is just on the printout.
Okay.
Well, no, it does say, yes.
So Clackamas County did a public outreach for the overarching natural hazard mitigation plan for the county.
This does, yeah.
And then we did a separate 30-day out to the public. Here's our version or our addendum to it. You know, what do you think? We did not get any feedback.
Okay. And I'm looking at the printout. I have to open the link to see the comments.
Oh.
Okay, thank you. More?
One more. If you could just provide a little bit more specifics on some of that coordination and the regular meetings that you have. Because like, for instance, so there's, you know, all the different cities, Estacada, Lake Oswego, Milwaukee, you know, and Wilsonville, we all have our own sections and stuff. But what about the coordination that happens with the school district and, you know, other entities like that? I'm assuming that's happening in these regular emergency response, the management and planning meetings, but can you tell us a little bit more about what those meetings are, how often, who's there? Because that would, of course, be important in the emergency. And, you know, from the public view, like, those are all the helpers, so you expect them to all be on the same page.
Yeah. So we typically have a monthly coordination meeting with all the various agencies within Clackamas County. Washington County does the same. Sometimes we would participate with them. Typically, it's with Clackamas County. And as far as other entities, you know, whether it's a utility or a school district, you know, just kind of depends on who's at the table at the time. So, yeah. But typically, if there is a coordination for an exercise, the invitation is put out to all of those entities, all those organizations.
Do we see our local partners at those meetings?
Um, sometimes.
Yeah. That would instill more confidence, I think, in the general public, in the community, if we really knew that there was a lot of coordination happening there, and even just familiarity with each other's teams, of course. I wonder if there's anything we can do to strengthen those relationships even. They seem like they would be important in this work.
Yeah. So I can tell you, for the fair coming up, is we have a Talton Valley Fire District is attending, and PGE is attending. The police are attending. Who else? Oh, we have Red Cross, as well as the Department of Human Services is attending. So, yeah, we try to reach out to various groups.
Good. Well, a big thank you to them for their participation then, too.
All right. Not seeing any more questions. This is on our consent agenda, and thank you for taking the time with it.
You bet.
It's going to be very important, risk mitigation. And so now we are going to address, hear about the update on the response to the Mediterranean
Good evening, Council. Mayor Fitzgerald, thanks for having us tonight. I'm Georgia McAllister, Associate Planner. And with me, I have Allison Monroe, who is a master's student at Oregon State University, and she's doing some research on MOB as well in their behaviors. And then I also have Max Harinzago.
Ragazino.
Hagazino, I'm sorry. With Oregon Department of Agriculture. So they were going to help me a little bit with some of the entomology today and give you more information, provide more info about the state's response. So very briefly, I know you are all up to date on what Mediterranean oak bor is, but in case anyone is following along, our residents, I just want to go over it quickly. It's an invasive ambrosia beetle. They're targeting Oregon white oak trees. Wilsonville appears to be some of the epicenter of those infestations, which is, they have fungal colonies within the trees, and those reduce the health of the trees, eventually leading to their decline. And some of those signs and symptoms, we've gone over those before, and I have them up on the slide here. We're finding it's not always as black and white as maybe we initially thought, but that's part of all of this process. We have more questions than answers, still remains true. Right here, we have a recent picture. This was truly a few weeks ago. This is at the Park at Maryfield neighborhood. And I think it's a helpful picture to understand that scale a little better. There is a MOB specimen on a hand, as well as a really clear sign of that flagging branch, finding that that is more present this time of year, so as it gets really hot and we're experiencing more drought than maybe in the springtime. So that's another pattern we've just seen emerging recently. We have been having ongoing coordination with Oregon Department of Forestry and ODA. And we're finding the behavior of MOB is a little bit different here than what's going on in California. So while California and Oregon are talking, it's not always exactly what's been going on there. Part of that may be that we've identified the MOB in Oregon is from Germany, while the one in California is actually from France. So there's some distinctions there. And it may also just be the climate of Oregon, like, there's many different factors that could go into that. Some key points is, we're finding two points of entry in certain trees. So I talked before how they were coming in through the canopy. In some cases, it's the canopy and the base of the tree, which is different than what they've seen in California. The emergence and dormancy patterns are a bit different, and we're still learning about what that looks like, because this is really year one that we've seen it. So it's going to take many more years till we have a full understanding of that. And in California, the white oaks are not the main target of this particular invasive. Only white oaks that have been damaged by fire are finding it present. So it's another really different sort of circumstance. And that may just be that our Oregon white oaks in Oregon are not doing as well, based on a number of factors. We talked about how they would be doing some trapping efforts over the summer. So far, there have been 27 positive traps in 2024, and it has narrowed down a little bit where the MOB may be present in Oregon. So it's about as far north as Troutdale, as far west as Sherwood. Salem is the southern extent. It's harder to nail down exactly how far east it is, simply because there are less traps there, but we know that it's present to the east as well. We continue to just really want to emphasize that the most important thing we can do to protect the trees is care for them, and so that's before they show any symptoms, making sure that we're addressing soil moisture problems. Oak trees are, live a long life, so sudden shifts in either overly dry or overly wet can really shock a tree, and so making sure we're monitoring that, any injuries addressed as soon as possible, and that we're working to combat other invasives that we know how to treat at this time. As far as disposal options go, incineration still is the gold bar standard. It's very difficult to do that. And so as I'm working with residents, that is not often the path that is followed, unfortunately, when trees need to come down. Chipping is the next best option, getting to one-inch chips. That's also a challenge for these very large, very hardwood trees. And if you can do the chipping, as well as high-heat composting or something to heat the fungus that's within there, that is more effective than just the chipping of the wood. But again, we are working with residents. They are trying their very best to meet these standards. They're difficult standards to meet. A big shift is that we're not recommending the use of Visqueen for solarization. The climate in California is different than the climate in Oregon. In some cases, using Visqueen traps the moisture within the debris, and that allows for the colonies to actually thrive. So we are not recommending doing that anymore. Charbonneau was an area of interest when we first discovered MOB. We know that they can target red oak trees. There still has not been any case of Mediterranean oak bor within red oak trees in Oregon, so it's a great, great sign. Regardless, Morgan Holan, our consulting arborist, did a windshield survey of all of our red oaks along French Prairie, did not find any stressor, or they found stressors, but nothing indicating MOB. I also know that the community of Charbonneau, as well as our, some people on our public work teams, they've been brainstorming how to help those trees for a while, and they're making progress on that, which is a wonderful thing. As I mentioned, removal has continued in certain areas in town. We are really encouraging retention as much as possible, partially because, once the trees are down, it's difficult to figure out what to do with that debris and help the homeowners with that, but also because there is some hope that if we bolster the health of trees, they may be able to fight off the infestation through limb removal, potentially the insecticide/fungicide treatment. We don't have much information there. The removals in town are occurring in generally the same areas. So that's within, the hotspots I've found are within about a three-quarter mile stretch of Canyon Creek Road. There's been four removals there, and we expect a few more to happen over the next few weeks, as well as Park at Maryfield and Villebois. We're seeing infestations in that area, and that picture I showed earlier was from the Park at Maryfield. And then, of course, Frog Pond, where we first found the infestation. There has not been another tree that's come down there recently, which is great news. Morgan Holan also conducted a monitoring report and investigation of all of the city-owned Oregon white oak trees. So that's 119 trees, and she did that late June, early July. Only six were presenting obvious signs of MOB infestation. I would just say, this does not mean that only six trees are impacted. So we're finding that it's not always as obvious as you may have initially thought, so great sign, but it does not mean that only six are impacted. With this monitoring report, she also had recommendations for care, and specific recommendations for 87 of those 119 trees. She did a fantastic job really looking into that. Most of that includes some of the care I've talked about previously, so I won't go over that again. As I said, we're still coordinating with the state as much as we possibly can. Wilsonville is in a difficult position of continuing to be the epicenter, but we have the opportunity to help inform research, and I think that is really important work. We have been coordinating, trying to have the presence of people like Allison and Max at the removal of trees. That way, they can study what the colonization patterns looked like within the tree, learn more, and just build up our science and data behind that. We have a few projects that are happening right now. So up in Frog Pond, there is a grove where a tree had been removed prior. The other trees appear to be struggling a bit, but not necessarily infested. And so ODF worked with their HOA to set up irrigation for that grove of trees. And the hope is, if we can help them with the drought, they can fight it off, and we don't need to start to slowly remove each of our trees over the years. Another really exciting experiment is what Allison is working on. It's a log hatch experiment, and it's using eight bolts of wood around a few infested trees within Wilsonville, and they have ethanol within them. The goal is to attract the MOB to these bolts, and then we can learn more about them when we have that specimen. And she can speak more to that if you have questions. A small scale, there is some repellent testing happening with residents who are open and wanting to see what they can do for their oaks, and that's with a known repellent that works with a pine invasive. And then another example would be the Wilsonville High School oak, or the Cumberland Heritage oak, was found to be infested this year. Really kind of shocking, because it looked great through most of this year, and then all of a sudden, we had a flagging branch. And so what has been done there is the one branch that appeared to be the most impacted has been removed. And the hope is that potentially by diverting some of the water, it's actually fairly wet in that area, which is a shift for that oak tree. So if we could divert water, other care treatments, can cutting the infestation out save the tree? That's not known right now, but that's the approach they're going to take there, and we're going to monitor that closely.
Is that a tree right near the entrance to Wilsonville?
It is, yes. We did treat that with insecticide and fungicide last year. It's likely it was already impacted and just not presenting signs yet. It looked really good the last few years, and it took a turn about a month and a half ago. So with the insecticide and fungicide, we have checked in on those trees. We're finding the trees that were really not doing well are continuing to not do well. It didn't seem to make an impact there necessarily. But at the west side, there is still infestation, but the trees are looking healthy. So we don't know, we won't know for a while, but we're hoping to have more opportunities to study that with some private partners who are wanting to learn more. And then we've been participating in a monthly working group, just trying to keep these partnerships strong, so that we're there when we know, or when an opportunity for research comes up, so we can offer our space to do that, connect on that, and just see what else we can do. I'm going to hand this over to Max now.
Yeah, thank you. And I'd first off, just love to thank all of you in the City of Wilsonville as a whole for the amazing coordination and partnership and response to this pest that is above and beyond. And I think the, it really goes to show, and I think the results and hopefully the response will be, hopefully, we can actually see a better response than other, with other invasive pests that are unresponded to. So on this slide in front of you, you'll see some results of the survey that we've been working on. We've been coordinating with our partners at the Department of Forestry, as well as USDA and OSU, to monitor oak tree reports as they come in. Hopefully, you all are familiar with the invasive species hotline, coordinated by the Oregon Invasive Species Council. As those reports come in of symptomatic dying oak trees across the state, we'll go out and survey those and assess whether or not Mediterranean oak bor is present or not. The City of Wilsonville has been most thoroughly surveyed, which you can see in the blown-up map here. There's been a lot of survey effort gone statewide, and the... There's been a lot of survey effort gone statewide, and the presence is lining up pretty tightly with the trapping data that we mentioned earlier. And I'll pass it back to Allison.
Hi, I'll echo Max's thanks. I really couldn't be doing my research without Georgia and Dustin and all of you guys helping with the research. I feel really lucky to be working in Wilsonville. As Georgia said, I'm a graduate student, but I'm also funded by the National Science Foundation, so I have to share that as part of my research. So, just noting that. And I wanted to show you guys a really clear effect on one of the larger oak trees at Marassi Plaza. So in front of you, there's three images that I've taken. The one on the right from September was taken yesterday. The one on the left was at the beginning of May of this year. So each of these photos shows the difference over two months. This tree was already heavily infested when we found it. This is one of the trees that I'm doing the log experiment around. But as you can see, there's a pretty substantial decline in the amount of branches in the canopy, especially when you compare the photo from May to September. This is unfortunate, but it does show the impact that such a small beetle can have. I think sometimes it's hard to imagine that such a tiny insect could affect a 300-year-old oak tree, but obviously, we're seeing that happen, so.
I have a question.
Yeah?
At what point, showing this over the summer, at what point is a decision made that this tree needs to be removed?
That's a good question. I don't know if that's as much for me as for you.
Yeah, I would say that in terms of trees that we manage for the city, it becomes a safety question. And so it's making sure that we are keeping our residents and our visitors safe. Right now, we're not seeing them necessarily hop tree to tree, so it's not, they are hopping trees to tree, but not very quickly. And so having the tree standing may not be any worse than having a tree taken down and sitting on a lot. And so it's making sure that people are safe, and then making decisions based off of that.
So that sounds like it's a learning that we had from when it was first introduced, because the thought was, is we didn't know how quickly it would spread and what the urgency was, and they could spread very quickly, like, was it during the winter or some, there was a certain period of time, but now you're saying not necessarily the case.
Yeah, and we won't know the extent, because it feels like trees will look healthy, not so great, and then suddenly decline. And so I think this time of year is really crucial for understanding that piece, but it is maybe moving a little slower than we feared.
Yeah, I think actually going to the next slide, I can explain a little more about their lifecycle and how they do kill the tree. So, they, and you can stop me if you already know this, but the reason that, so the fungus that these beetles vector, it's a pathogen to the tree. But essentially, over time, these really small beetles, they, they farm a fungus inside of their galleries, and they have to farm it. The fungus dies without them, and they die without their fungus. They have a really intricate relationship with one another. But so, we call it a founderous female. She'll sniff out a tree, we assume. And right now, we think that they're attracted to ethanol. That's pretty typical for what other ambrosia beetles are attracted to, and trees tend to emit ethanol when they're injured or sick in some way. So there's two different approaches for ambrosia beetles. They will either go directly to the injury, or to the mushroom, or the, you know, whatever's happening in the tree. They'll sense that really particularly and go there, or sometimes, it seems like they just smell the ethanol and kind of bumble into the tree, and, and they try, and their fungus grows in there, and, and that works. But, all of that said, they're very happy to stay inside of their tree if, if there's plenty of humidity and area for them to farm their fungus, so.
So could the ice storm have been the mitigating event?
We're not totally sure, but it certainly seems correlated.
I don't think it helped, and we were just discussing how it will be interesting to see other communities hit as hard in the next few years, like Corbalis, if they have a similar pattern. But that has been our working theory from nearly the start, especially with where we see the infestations, our areas where our city was hit really badly. But interestingly, with what Allison was saying, over at the west station where one tree was removed because of infestation, there is a stump in the ground that still has a colony. The tree is not there, it is just the stump, but it is moist enough within there that they are still happy and farming inside that stump.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it just, it seems to be that over time, where the beetles are really densely populated inside of the tree, essentially, the tree becomes girdled, which is why we think we're seeing different symptoms in Oregon than in California. If they are attacking the bowl or the trunk of the tree first, then there's a lot more xylem there for the tree to be able to move nutrients up. And so it would take more time for it to get to the point that the tree would show symptoms, but once it did start showing symptoms, it would be a lot more dramatic than if it was happening in one branch in the canopy. So, yeah.
Thank you very much for having us here again, and if you have more questions, we'll see if we can answer them.
I have a couple of questions. So you said that the ones that are in Oregon originated in Germany? And so, I'll just tell you several questions, and then you can pick and choose. So I'm curious how, what your theory or hypothesis is on how they got from Germany to here? And then, do you have like an average count of the number of beetles that are in infested trees, and how do you think they're traveling? Are they going along the ground, or are they flying in the wind, or, what, what are your theories? Thank you.
How they got here and then? So we, like, they likely came in, in raw wood material, be that, you know, this is, I'm going to pitch, don't move firewood, buy it where you burn it. Raw wood material can be imported to the US through a couple of different avenues. There are a couple of things that are exempt from heat or chemical treatment. So it could have come in through one of those pathways of import, or it could have come in via someone bringing something in illegally, smuggling, robbed, you know, or it could have been something that was just brought in anecdotally, just, it just hitched a ride on packing material. Unfortunately, without, you know, a looking glass into the past, we won't be able to actually tell for certain. There are some tracebacks that were, that we've been looking at initially, when the, when we thought the infestation was a little smaller, but none of those have turned up concrete evidence of, you know, this person brought in something made of oak from Germany, and it has beetle exit holes in it yet. That's unlikely to be the case. It's kind of rare that we get a perfect interception like that. But, yeah, and as far as their dispersal, they can fly and they can spread on their own. They are not great flyers, but they are able to fly. But realistically, if this is going to spread to another region of Oregon, it's probably going to be in wood material that someone cuts down, gives away on Facebook as free firewood, and it gets taken and brought to wherever, to the next city, and that's what we see with a lot of different invasive pests. So I wouldn't be surprised if that happens with Mediterranean oak borer as well, just someone doing something that they think is innocuous as free firewood, and that transmits this terrible pest.
Yeah, and just to add to that note, they, I didn't, they, they're, I didn't explain in their lifecycle, but they have a really unique lifecycle where they're, they can pretty much clone themselves. So it's one female that got here that has successfully become this large infestation, we think genetically. They're all pretty much clones of one another. The males have half of the genes that the females do, and it's, we're not totally certain the ratio of the males to females, but a fertilized female can go and lay plenty of female eggs, usually nine seems to be the average. And then, excuse me, they, a female, an unfertilized female can then lay male eggs, right? And then, and then they can just start mating with their brothers and sisters inside of the tree, and they're all very genetically similar to one another, but.
But as far as the number that are in an individual tree, one of the early samples that we had back over at the North Valley complex, just across town, we were having hundreds and hundreds of Mediterranean oak borer emerging out of a single, small log, about two feet diameter, you know, six inches.
That is a question I'm hoping to answer with the research that I'm doing. We're working with the city to collect infested wood when the trees are taken down, and I transport them to the ODA facility where I'm rearing them. And, yeah, it's, it, it can range quite a bit, it seems. It seems like some wood doesn't have a very high infestation, and other wood has really remarkably thousands of beetles, which is impressive. Was there another question I missed?
I just wanted to say, I really, really appreciate the update. And part of the report that I really like, because I'm a visual person, is where you showed the little beetle on a hand. So it kind of, you know, like, we can see it on a tree and stuff, but when we see that, it just gives you a really perspective. Like, to me, it's like, oh, that's the size of an ant. So thank you.
Anything else?
I have a question. In our packet, let's see, this was under the mob trapping section, and there was a mention of, like, a quarantine, and if that might be found sometime in the future. And it said, proposed similar to the Emerald Ash Borer, which, I mean, we've all heard about the Emerald Ash Borer, but I'm not as familiar with the quarantine aspect of what's been done there. Like, can you help describe what that would mean?
Yeah. The Emerald Ash Borer quarantine is one of several quarantines that the Department of Agriculture has on. In this case, for Emerald Ash Borer, it is woody material of host trees. So with Emerald Ash Borer, we know Emerald Ash Borer can be infesting ash wood, olive wood, or white fringed tree wood. So there is a quarantine in effect that makes it illegal to move woody material outside of initially Washington County, and now it is the four infested counties, which now include Yamhill, Marion, and Clackamas. Violating that can bring a fine. And if a business or a person wants to do so, and wants to treat the wood beforehand, they can reach out to the Department of Agriculture and work on creating a compliance agreement for, say, if you were to, say, heat treat, or if a nursery were to chemically treat then with their nursery stock with an insecticide beforehand that we knew is effective, that could, for the Emerald Ash Borer quarantine, be a way to be compliant and still move wood out. Right now, we haven't explored the option for a oak quarantine for Mediterranean oak borer because of all of the unknowns around it. This year's trapping effort is going to help us understand how widespread it is, and if a quarantine measure would be effective. The wider spread it is, the less effective a quarantine is.
Because it's already everywhere, though.
Exactly.
Can, can you tell us a little bit more about the log catching experiment? So is this intended to, like, draw all of them out of the trees that the logs are surrounding? Or is it just to, like, get a sample so that you can do research on that sample, or? And then I noticed, let's see, in the description, it says trap logs and controls were cut from, well, a certain property, and then painted with Bailey's wood sealant. And I didn't know the significance of using the Bailey's wood sealant. So could, could you just explain a little bit more on that research?
Yeah, of course. So the Bailey's sealant is a mixture of waxes to keep the wood from going dry, since they do rely on humidity. It's commonly used in transporting wood if they're worried about humidity, if the wood's going a long distance in forestry. It's used to seal the ends of the, of the logs. And it prevents cracking and things like that, so it can be aesthetic as well. But yeah, so that was just painted on there to keep the humidity high enough that it would still be attractive to various beetles. And the, the log catch experiment started out, so I've been reading a lot about different ambrosia beetles, because there's not much on these guys, because they're decomposers in their native range, they don't pose any threat. So, nobody has really studied them. So, there has, there is evidence that other ambrosia beetles and bark beetles are attracted to ethanol-soaked and ethanol-treated logs, and they can act as a way to draw them out of the tree, or at least prevent them from attacking another tree that would be further away. So there's an ethanol source right nearby that might prevent them from moving further. But, the, the question is kind of morphing as, as we're studying and learning more about mob, because we're seeing the native bark and ambrosia beetles are attacking right at the site of ethanol application. They're boring right into the hole where the ethanol's applied. And so far, it doesn't seem that mob is. So that, while that sounds like it doesn't answer any questions, it certainly brings up more, but it does tell us that it's not just ethanol that they're attracted to, we don't think, right now. So that does help point us in a management direction. It would be really nice if ethanol-treated logs would have been a nice strategy, right?
Decoy, like, come over here instead.
Yeah, yeah. It would have been really great, but, yeah, I, I think we're still getting some really valuable answers from these logs. I, I've only had one mob beetle come out of a log, so I can't guarantee if she was just hitching a ride on the outside of it, or if they're, they could be breeding inside of them, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't know, because I haven't dissected them yet, but I will be dissecting them at the end of the field season. Well, I'll wait a few months afterwards to see if they reproduce inside of them. But, yeah, it's, I think we're, we're getting some answers slowly but surely, and we should have some more answers in the, in the coming months, honestly. It's just, right now is their active season, and in their native range, September is when they go into overwintering, and they overwinter until March in Germany is what's described. That is not necessarily consistent with what we're seeing here, but it does seem like, when I've been taking the bark off of infested trees, they are at the right life stage to be going into overwintering mode, so hopefully, we might not see them for a few months.
Interesting. Well, I'm really glad that we're, we're getting that information and seeking the information, so thank you for your, for your roles in that. And I guess that was one, one of my last things, was what do we know from Germany? If we know that this, this one came from Germany and California's came from France or something, then what is, what can Germany tell us?
There's, there's one paper by Wolfgang Shuttle from 1964, and it was translated by Curtis Ewing's brother, Todd Ewing. So Curtis Ewing is the, the scientist with Cal FIRE, who's studying mob down in California. And luckily, his brother studied abroad in Germany and speaks really fluent German, so he was able to help us translate the original description. And there, really, there's not that much, because it was before some big advancements in fungal identification, so we can't rely on even the fungal identification that they used to figure out the symbiont. And there, they, he describes the lifecycle, which is helpful, it gives us a starting point. He says that there's two generations in a warm year and one generation in a cold year. And it's thought that the cold temperatures would encourage them to stay inside of the tree over the winter and for more of the year, because it's nice and warm inside of the tree, they've got a nice coat on. So they would stay in there and not disperse as much, and then they would come out in March and April, end of March, beginning of April, and then that first generation disperses end of June, beginning of July, and then it's unclear from there, but we know that in September is when they're kind of in their adult stage and going into overwintering. So they do tend to attack already felled oak wood there, and they will attack the face that's been cut. So again, they're attracted to these injuries, it seems. And in other countries in Europe, they're caught oftentimes as bycatch in kinds of experiments where they're monitoring for other insects or in damaged forests. So I'm working on compiling some of that data that they're mentioned as kind of a side thought, and maybe we can get some more information there, because it doesn't seem like their life cycles are as consistent in Europe as, as Shuttle described in the original description. It seems kind of all over the place.
Well, and are there, like, cities that are in Germany that are seeing, like, what we're seeing, where you have suddenly all of your oak trees are at risk, or, you know what I mean, where you have a decline in a notable population of your oak trees?
There, there are really only decomposers there, so they're only attacking dead or dying trees, felled trees.
So it's not as noticeable, or like, on people's radar, and so we're not going to get information about it in that way?
Well, and that's the, what makes invasive such a threat. So where they are native, they are part of the ecosystem, they're not threats to the trees, or whatever they are decomposing, you know, whatever type of invasive. When they are brought out of that environment is when they tend to do something like this and have issues. So in Germany, seems all right. Here, it's a big problem.
Yeah.
And that can be for a number of different factors. That's what my field is, biological control. A lot of different factors, either, it could be that the oaks in Germany have a lot more resistance to either the beetle or the fungus, and it's not as able to build up as high a population numbers, or it could be because of different predators of the beetle, or other things that are keeping the beetle's population down there that keep it under control that we don't have present here. So we're right, unfortunately, at the very beginning of that kind of work. There is some evidence that some of those types of predators exist for other very closely related beetles, but that work's all been done since 2015 and to currently ongoing, so it's like with a lot of the other research. So it's like with a lot of the other research that we've talked about where the field is advanced, leagues, since this insect was last looked at. That's really the case with these potential control options as well.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for covering this so thoroughly. And I'm really glad our staff, our city manager, and also the council supported taking this on and working with the Department of Agriculture, Department of Forestry, and Oregon State University. If we had just ignored it, I guess we can, without even being scientists, guess where we would be. So hopefully, we continue to get more good information. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to the end of our work session. I will adjourn the work session, and we will just go directly into an urban renewal meeting. Everyone okay with that? I will call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency on September 5th at 6:31 PM. Will the agency recorder please call the role?
Member Barry.
Present.
Member Ockervall.
Present.
Member Dunwell.
Present.
Chair Fitzgerald.
Present.
And Member Linville is excused.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Your Honor, I move to approve the following order of agenda.
Is there a second? Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. I want to ask if we have anyone on the phone or Zoom or otherwise to provide citizen input. Okay, we'll not read this section because we don't have anyone wanting to provide input. And that will bring us to the consent agenda. And we have that detailed out. Will the agency attorney please read the consent agenda by title?
U.R.A. Resolution Number 351, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Harper Howf Peterson Regellas Inc., HHPR, for engineering consulting services for the Brown Road Improvement Project, capital improvement project number 4216, and minutes of the June 3, 2024 Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been read. Do I have a motion to approve it as read?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second? The consent agenda has been moved and seconded as read. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 4-0. That is all that we have for our Urban Renewal Agency meeting. I will adjourn at 6:33. And now we will have a break until our regular city council meeting, which is published to begin at 7:00. Thank you.
And Council Linville is excused.
Thank you. Will everyone please join us and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Council President Ocravall, may I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Your Honor, I move to approve the following order of agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. I will start with Mayor's business, and let me get my notes ready here because I didn't bring the printout. Sorry about that. I saved it with the wrong title. So I want to start by talking about some upcoming things that are happening in Wilsonville, and then wrap up with report to the council and everyone on some of my activities that I've been doing since we last met, and you'll hear the same from our councilors during council reports. We had a lot going on this summer. Before I -- one thing I wanted to share, I got an interesting email, and probably all the other councilors did too, from the League of Oregon Cities, which is a very good resource that most every city in Oregon takes part in, for various reasons. There is a presentation coming up that I thought illustrated some of the challenges that we all face in Oregon in our cities, and that is, there is going to be a presentation by the mayor of Hermiston, Dave Drozman, who happens to be the president of LOC, League of Oregon Cities, this year. And so he is leading a discussion coming up soon on the difficulties that cities face in maintaining sufficient and stable revenue sources. And the League of Oregon Cities, at the request of the member cities, is doing some work to identify solutions to bring cities needed relief in maintaining their fiscal health. And the majority of -- this is just a brief description, but for the majority of cities within Oregon, they say property taxes remain the primary source of consistent revenue to fund basic and needed services. And unfortunately, as we've discussed in this meeting before, this President Drozman, who's the mayor of Hermiston, says, "Oregon's current property tax structure does not provide enough fundings for cities to meet even the most essential needs of its residents and business owners." Of course, it does depend on the mix of tax revenue from industry and business and residences that any city has. But he goes on to say that as cities look to alternative revenue streams, the League of Oregon Cities will be discussing the successes and failures across the state. So we will have cities from all over the state joining in that conversation. I hope that some of us can join that, and some of our staff, too. So tomorrow, actually, there is a special event happening at one of our big employers here in Wilsonville, newer employers, Twist Bioscience. And council members and I, along with other elected officials from the region and business leaders, will celebrate Twist Bioscience's first full year of operation here in Oregon. And we will recognize the city's innovation, Wilsonville Investment Now acronym WIN, Economic Development Incentive Program. And this is a unique program that was started in Wilsonville several years ago to spark new businesses with specific higher wages and other attributes moving to Wilsonville. And it incentivizes leading businesses to operate in Wilsonville by providing a limited-duration property tax rebate for qualifying development projects that create family wage jobs and substantial new assessed value. Twist Bioscience is a leading global synthetic biology and genomics company, and is the first company to participate in our city's economic development program. They have so far invested 100 million, they have invested this, in their Wilsonville facility, and then now employ over 270 employees with family wage jobs. I've had the good opportunity and fortune to be able to tour that two or three times, and I recommend reading about it to see what they do, because it's very unique. On September 11th, another really important thing is coming up for the community, and this is an open house here at City Hall, and the topic is the Beckman Interceptor and Trail Project Open House. It's going to be September 11th from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., hosted by the city. So this Beckman Trail Interceptor project, which you can read more about on the city website, is the purpose is to increase the city's sewer capacity, where we have a lot more housing going in out there, and to support development of Frog Pond East and South neighborhoods. It provides access for crews to clean and maintain those sewer pipes. And the project also adds a long-envisioned regional trail that connects the Frog Pond West area neighborhoods along Beckman Road to Memorial Park, enabling people to safely walk, run, and bicycle along that connected trail system. So completing these capital projects together minimizes costs as well as time and impacts of construction for the community's benefit. So this open house event is designed to -- for staff to be here to share the design progress and gather input from the community members and review the anticipated project timeline. And that is -- that has been advertised various ways, and in that neighborhood especially. Then coming up on September 18th, this is a much more broad-focus open house. This is an open house that is going to be held here at City Hall, but the open house is presented by ODOT, Oregon Department of Transportation. And the subject matter is the I-5 Boone Bridge Project, Wednesday, September 18th. And I'm just going to read some details about this. I hope we get a lot of attendance at this event. It's been many years in the making, and I think we really need to hear from the community on this. ODOT has been conducting both federal and state-required studies in the lead-up to a final Federal National Environmental Policy Act, otherwise known as NEPA Study, and potential funding for this bridge. In particular, ODOT has had to study the potential impacts of the proposed southbound auxiliary lane, as well as the best alternative transportation facility for bike-ped access. In terms of bike-ped facilities, ODOT is looking at either an on-highway sidewalk separated by a concrete barrier from traffic, or the city's long-proposed French Prairie Bridge. At ODOT's last open house here in November 2023, over two-thirds of the participants preferred the French Prairie Bridge as the I-5 bike -- the bridge's bike-ped facility. The open house event will allow the public to hear about these studies and express their thoughts and preferences. Now, I just want to say a couple things about these two aspects of the bridge. The southbound auxiliary lane is something that is really important, and I ask everybody to pay attention to that. I think it will go forward, but there are people who do not want us to have that. They don't want to see any expansion of any freeway facilities, and so they are often exerting pressure to not do something like this. In my view, why would you rebuild a bridge that causes us all the problems it causes us in the same exact way it looks now? us in the same exact way it looks now? It would be a huge waste of a huge amount of money. But they do seem to be moving forward with the southbound auxiliary lane, which would let us just slide along when we're going southbound to Charbonneau or to Shempui and various other areas without getting on the freeway. ODOT has identified that the main reason for the traffic tie-ups on the Boone Bridge are that years ago, when it was designed in a way that they would not allow now, the on-ramps and off-ramps are too close and causes traffic weaving. The bike ped facility, I encourage you to ask questions about that at the open house, but it's my understanding that ODOT is now expected to take the lead on building that bike ped bridge. They are basically compelled to do a bike ped alternative because of other reasons. And so that's very important to come to that open house. Moving on to another things that I have attended, since our last meeting on August 5th, I have a few items to report on. Over there near Twist Bioscience is another really interesting scientifically related business called ESS. And I had the opportunity in August to participate in a ribbon cutting event here in Wilsonville. And the purpose was, it wasn't any new thing that had been built, but it was really a symbolic ribbon cutting because the ESS, which I'll tell you a little bit about what they do, but they were celebrating a $50 million financing package that will fund an expansion at this Wilsonville facility to encourage the export of ESS batteries. Senator Wyden was there and also executives from the U.S. Export-Import Bank. So ESS is another great company, very interesting company to read about, to see what they do, but they are in short description, they're a high-tech manufacturer of what they call iron flow battery technology and allows long-duration energy storage at commercial and utility scale. The batteries are the size of a semi-truck or railroad car and they are described as an energy warehouse. The batteries can be used all around the world. They ship them all over to store electrical power that is generated by solar and wind. The batteries are then tapped for their power by the utilities when the sun isn't shining or wind isn't blowing to supply peak power demand at the peak power demand times. And the specific unique attribute of this grant and this funding that they got, or financing package, is because it's, these are American-made energy products that are being sold out of the country. And it's a very competitive field with China and other countries basically finding ways to sell those at much cheaper prices. So that was a great tour as well and a great thing to celebrate. Also, last week, as I had mentioned at the previous city council meeting, because I think it was coming up in a day or two from after our last council meeting, Counselor Barry and I, along with city community development and planning staff, participated in a Wilsonville residential development tour. This is at the end of August. And the tour was for members and associates of the Home Builders Association, the Portland Metropolitan Association of Realtors, Clackamas County Business Alliance, of which Wilsonville is a member, Westside Economic Alliance, of which Wilsonville is a member. And they invited the boards of those organizations, those two, and also an organization called Representatives from Oregon Smart Growth. And we were accompanied by Wilsonville State Legislature Senator Erin Woods and Representative Courtney Neuron and Metro Counselor Christine Lewis. We also had on board senior housing staff of the governor's office and housing managers of the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. This group had recently done a presentation at one of the meetings that Counselor Barry and I attend, which is called C4 Clackamas Cities, where we all meet together and talk about various issues that are unique or common that we can work on together. And after hearing the presentation by the housing managers for the state, I thought it would be good to invite them on the tour. This tour, and we did have, I think, three of them. This tour allowed us to showcase a range of residential housing development opportunities in Wilsonville, including a town center, the Wilsonville Transit Center Oriented Development Project, Veilbois, the new Frog Pond West, and the location for Frog Pond East and South. So we had, I appreciate our planning staff that came on the bus when it was their time to talk. We really had a crowded bus, but we were able, they were able to illustrate the importance of public infrastructure, infrastructure to serve new development. And we all know that the governor's office wants cities to build new housing, but it's not always that simple. You hear from Sherwood, you hear from Wilsonville, you hear from other cities that they are really needing support for, in our case, a sewer trunk line to get out to Frog Pond East and South to make that project really get started. And without water and sewer service, roads and sidewalks, transit and parks, nothing can be developed. City tours like this, and we've done this several years ago, I was able to go on one several years ago, which is where I got the idea. And it really helps us build connections between the public and private sectors and improve understanding by local and state leaders of the challenges that local governments have to develop housing. We need new, as I just described, we're going to hear at League of Oregon Cities, we need new tools and funding sources if we're to meet the need for new housing in our state. So we had a lot of good discussions on that tour. And we do have a legislative session coming up. I will not be here, but our city and our advocates will be working in that legislative session. And what I remember from the past session is there are lots of urgent meetings and time to get down and talk to the legislators and kind of describe and explain what is needed. What legislation would really help cities instead of legislation that is academic or seems like it would be a good idea? So I hope this tour helped illustrate what is really needed. And I think my last item about any, I have two more items. Next one is about the groundbreaking that we had at the Wilsonville Transit Center for the transit-oriented development building, which now has a name, it's called Vuela. We had Counselor President Ocravol, counselors Barry and Dunwell, and I, we're joined by a number of local and state officials and other people that came to the event for the groundbreaking of this new Wilsonville Transit Center, transit-oriented development. And the name Vuela is Spanish for flying. We were joined by Metro Counselor Christine Lewis, Clackamas County Commissioner Martha Schrader, Senator Erin Woods, and Representative Courtney Neuron. The developer of this project, Palindrom, saw an opportunity to help Oregonians soar to new heights. That's where they came up with the name with the 121 affordable housing units and convenient access to regional transit and social services. And we will hear, I think, more about this later today in some of the other reports. But residents of this building, this is what's unique about it being located at the transit center, they will have ready access to smart transit information center on the first floor and that tells anyone how to access transit in Wilsonville and connecting out beyond Wilsonville. We will also have, obviously, our smart transit takes off right from there. And we will also, on the ground floor of this building, locate Wilsonville Community Sharing, which is our social service referral agency, and an Oregon Food Bank affiliate. Vuela will offer a range of affordable housing options to households making between 30% and 80% of area medium income, median income, with a focus on family-sized units. And I will quickly read a list of the funding sources, the total funding sources. The total amount for this building is $57 million. These are very expensive projects to build, especially in today's construction world. The building is financed with $28.4 million in state tax-exempt bonds issued by Oregon Housing and Community Services, 24.6 million in equity from federal low-income housing tax credits allocated by Oregon Housing and Community Services, 8 million in regional metro affordable housing bonds that were generated by the voter-approved housing bond measure that I believe passed in 2018. And those came to us and were awarded to us by Clackamas County. And also 1.9 million in a state legislative grant that was advanced by Representative Courtney Neuron, and that funds all those functions on the main floor. In addition, there is a $1.4 million city system development charge subsidy and a land donation to Palindrom, the project's developer, and a $250,000 metro transit-oriented development grant. So this really required a lot of people working together and I believe the final, the date it will be completed is about a year from now. And finally, I attended a meeting of the Aurora State Airport Master Plan. Counselor Linville is our main representative for that, but she is not able to be here today. But this, I did mention that this process has taken some interesting turns. So in addition to proposing a 500-foot runway extension presently to accommodate more larger and heavier aircraft, the aviation department wants to either move the Wilsonville Hubbard State Highway, which is called 551, or the airport air traffic control tower to accommodate this expansion. And as part of the airport expansion, the aviation department describes what sounds like a proposal, this is not final, but it sounds like a proposal to take over about 100 acres of private property near the airport that includes lands zoned exclusive farm use, rural residential, and rural industrial. So these projects appear to be multimillion-dollar projects, very high cost. I'm not sure personally how that benefits the general public. As I've said before, as close as we are to the Salem Airport, which is built for larger, heavier aircraft, and this Aurora State Airport has been relied upon as a very important airport for light aircraft for a long time, but ODOT seems determined to have it take up a great increasing volume as they project of heavier, larger jets. There is a nonprofit organization that is located nearby that has started a petition opposing the expansion of the airport, which you can find by looking up FringeofFrenchPrairie.org. Lastly, I will note that our next city council meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 16th, starting at 7:00 PM. So that concludes that part of my mayor's business. And I would now like to move to the consideration of the endorsement of Clackamas County's Community College Bond Measure Number 3-613. Do we have anyone making a presentation? Okay, well, you get to listen to me tell about this. We also have this in our packet. So in this week's meeting packet, we included detailed information about the proposed bond measure for Clackamas Community College, which is scheduled for voters' consideration at the November 5th, 2024 general election. This bond measure will allow the college to make needed facilities improvements and better support various training and education programs. This Wilsonville campus is specifically noted for the opportunity for improved workforce development and employer outreach, as you can read in the flyer that we have in the packet. Property owners in the Clackamas Community College District currently pay .25, in other words, 25 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. If passed, this measure is estimated to continue that same rate, meaning the tax rates stay the same if the measure passes. Additionally, the college would be eligible, if this passes, for up to $16 million in matching funds from the state. Passing this bond would secure eligibility for these matching funds. Having described this ballot measure, what I'd like to do is ask the city council for a motion to endorse the Community College Bond Measure 3-613 and ask for a second. And then after that, we could have comments and discuss it and then call for a vote. So could I have a motion for the city council to endorse Clackamas Community College Bond Measure Number 3-613?
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion that we endorse the proposed bond measure, Clackamas Community College, 2024 Proposed Bond Measure 3-613.
Thank you.
3-613, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been moved and seconded. And now I'd like to ask for discussion, any comments that the counselors would like to make at this time. Go ahead.
Okay. One of the reasons why I think this is wise for us is I see that this bond also will support the STEM learning opportunities for students at Clackamas Community College. And we know from the industries that are important employers in Wilsonville that there is a need for that type of workforce that has background in STEM fields. And I see this as an investment, of course, in the community college, but also for our local businesses, for the community as a whole, as we depend on that economic vitality that's within our city.
Anyone else? Counselor Dunwell.
Thank you. One of the reasons that I filed to become a candidate for city council was I really wanted to do what I could during my term to make sure that Wilsonville was a city where children would one day raise their families and want to live here when they're grown up, rather than being a city where they exit. And, you know, Clackamas Community College only has three locations, Oregon City, Portland, and Wilsonville. And it gives us a tremendous opportunity here to allow those that are looking for a skill to be able to develop that skill with a certificate or a two-year degree. But it's also a launching pad for a lot of individuals who may not necessarily have the funds to go to a traditional college, because we know our university system is quite expensive. So it can be that launch pad where they build confidence, they receive education, and get to make choices going forward. And then whether they go to Portland State or, you know, University of Oregon or maybe some remote type of program, but the funding of this, I think, is really important to our future and we're very fortunate in Wilsonville to have that as part of the centrality of our educational system. And it's not an asset that Wes Lynn or Beaverton or any of those other cities can say. It's unique to us as far as one of those far southern suburbs. And I'm really excited about being able to support that endorsement.
Thank you.
So to tag along, I echo what both counselors supported, the, this bond. I think education in our community is really, really important. And I love that for the money that would be used for Wilsonville is to expand the workforce partnership to better meet our community's needs. And so I also support it. And I like the idea that it's not going to increase the tax rate, it's going to maintain what people are already paying.
Thank you. And I wanted to note a couple of things that I find really unique about it or really valuable that just haven't been mentioned yet that I will add. And that is that Clackamas Community College also have some way, is an excellent tool to help advance Clackamas County's agricultural sector. And it's a really important economic sector for our county. We have long had ratings, very high ratings for the excellent soil that we have. We have excellent nursery crops that I think that was our, that is our number one crop. And recently, hearing from the dean of the School of Agriculture at Oregon State and also two people with the Department of Agriculture who spoke at the Clackamas County Business Alliance, which is that organization I just mentioned, we heard how contrary to what many people might think about agriculture, there are some excellent high-tech job needs in agriculture. We're seeing that where we had our, this agricultural sector often relied on migrant labor to do the harvesting. That is not really available as much, there's not as much interest in the young people of doing that. And so we have a lot of really interesting tech, high-tech ways of harvesting fruits, nursery crops, vegetables, and other crops. And there's actually a need for more development of robotics and other... development of robotics and other such things in agriculture. And then, secondly, in meeting with our employers, which many of our employers, such as D.W. Fritz, Collins Aerospace, when we have met with them, they have listed the number-one thing that they need from Wilsonville is they need science and math-oriented people to work there. And we hope they can get them from our Wilsonville schools, and I'm, I'm really impressed with what I've heard about how Wilsonville Schools, Clackamas Community College, and OIT have all worked together to create a smooth way of moving their credits along. So I think Clackamas Community College is a really valuable asset, and I am enthusiastic about supporting it. So having heard from all of the councilors, I will now call for a vote on this endorsement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-4-0. We now come to the communications section of our agenda, and we have a presentation by Erica Valentine about the Skate Park Mural Community Enhancement Program and our Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission. I'm sure you'll talk about that.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor Fitzgerald. I'm here to talk about the Memorial Park Skate Park Mural Project, which just completed, and that project was funded through the Metro Community Enhancement Program. So just some background as far as how we got to this place of this project. The city has an Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy that was adopted in 2020, and that is really the framework for the work that the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission, or ACHC, is doing. So it has findings and recommendations for cultivating a sustainable, long-term plan that supports community aspirations for a vibrant cultural scene. So within that strategy are key findings, and one of those is that public art is recognized as a significant cultural asset in Wilsonville. So the ACHC is really focused on public art since they began meeting. They're the city's newest, you know, board or committee, and they started in the spring of '22. The city council has also adopted the public art policy and guidelines, which I worked with the ACHC to get that through. So this is just a snapshot. On the left is a screenshot of the city's public art map, which is linked on the website, so you can scroll through and see all of the public art in Wilsonville, and it'll show you where it is on the map. But public art, it enriches the physical environment, it can bring spaces to life, it builds civic engagement, it creates a sense of community, it's inclusive, because it's free out in public parks or facilities, and it enhances creativity. So for this specific project, the goal was to create a public art mural on the outward-facing skate park surfaces to enhance the visual appeal of the skate park. So those are all the exterior walls, there's 10 different sections. If you just walk around the skate park, you'll see all those sections, and it was to bring vibrancy and excitement to the overall park and skate park. This mural is the first piece of public art in Memorial Park, so that's also exciting. And then it also provides an opportunity for the community to experience art. So this is the overall budget of this specific mural project. So the grant asked was $20,000, and we spent $19,000. On the chart, you see the two biggest sections, the red and the blue sections, those are funds that were paid directly to artists, so that makes up the majority of the budget. So that smaller blue section for the RFP, or Request for Proposal Stipends, I'll go more into that in the next slide, but that was for the artists that advanced to making specific designs for this project. The 80% was awarded to the artists that the panel selected, so the artists that actually did all the work, and then those smaller sections are for general supplies and a sign. So this is a kind of high-level overview of the entire process, and it will be a similar process for future public art projects moving forward, because it was really successful. So we first engaged with the skate community, so that was at the Skate Jam in 2023. That event is put on by a local organization, Wilsonville Skate Park Association, in collaboration with the Parks and Rec Department. So just talking to the skaters and seeing what they thought about that location for a mural. Excuse me. We then released a request for qualifications, or an RFQ. That is, that, you know, it's asking the artists, it's more general information, they're not doing specific design work, but giving work samples, talking about why they're interested in the project, and their experience. We got 50 responses from that, so 50 different applications from muralists, really throughout the entire country. So that was really exciting. And then we did an internal review of those 50, and those staff consisted of myself, as well as parks staff and library staff. We narrowed those down and sent the top eight of those to, for this panelist review. The panel consisted of the entire ACHC, as well as skaters from the community, so that process and that collaboration was really successful. We wanted to make sure we didn't just paint the skate park without engaging the skaters, since they're the users of that space. From that meeting, they narrowed it down to the top four artists that they wanted to actually submit proposals for. So those are the four artists that were compensated to create unique designs for this project, and they had to submit their work, shown exactly how it would look on all 10 walls, which are all 10 different shapes and dimensions. Then we had another review of those four designs, again with the ACHC and the skaters. They had a really robust discussion, they talked about not only the skate park, but how it relates in Memorial Park, how it's not just a standalone skate park, but there's so many other things going on in that location, and just what the community would, you know, respond to and appreciate, and making sure the skaters also liked the work, too. So the project was awarded to the artist Abigail Penfold. Then she, of course, did the painting, which took her maybe two or three weeks. She did a top coat, which is like an anti-graffiti coating, and then we had the 2024 Skate Jam, where we did a ribbon cutting and kind of unveiling of the mural, and that was just a couple weeks ago. So I wanted to just kind of show you kind of the whole process, just because it's really interesting from start to finish. So these are pulled directly from Abigail's design submission, so what she turned in. So these are actual photos of the skate park. So she's showing each wall, these aren't all the walls, there's 10, but showing that this was just the idea prior to her even, you know, getting selected. These are photos of Abigail, she's also a skater, which was really great for this project. So she was inspired by the landscapes of the Willamette Valley and wildlife that inhabits the area. She really wanted to highlight nature, but also relate to the town and relate to skateboarding. So her design, it narrates the building of a skateboard, so each little section shows animals with different parts of a skateboard. So that's kind of her concept, that they're all kind of gathering the parts of a skateboard to make the board. These are just some processed photos of her working, so she outlined everything just in a pen, and then she went back in with spray paint, which is the color. So I would say maybe 95% of her whole mural is spray paint, and she really liked, she had nothing but good things to say about Wilsonville, all the people that walked by while she was working. She said everyone was super friendly, and since it was on the exterior, you know, we didn't have to close the skate park at any point, so, you know, there's still users of the space while she was working, so that was, that was really fun to see as well. These are some photos of the mural. I tried to get all of the sides, but again, there are 10, so it's all on all of those sections, but you can kind of see the different animals, the beavers and the squirrels. There's a long, skinny section, which is kind of supposed to be like a log, you start with the wood to build the board, but it's really sweet, her design, and it's gotten a really positive response from the community. I think everyone, you know, has enjoyed it and appreciates the work that she did. Then we had our Skate Jam and ribbon cutting, so we had Counselor Akervall and Counselor Barry there, as well as some members from the ACHC and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. So that was a really great event to see, and to just kind of see the park getting used by the skaters with the, with the mural completed. So that is kind of the overview. I'll put her images back up, but if anyone had any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Go ahead, councilors.
Quick question for you. Where is she based out of?
She's based in Washington.
Is there a reason you went outside of the Oregon, outside of Oregon in your RFP?
We are required to follow, you know, the procurement contracting law, so we can't necessarily have preference over local artists, so it really came down to the panel looking at their specific kind of body of work, just the kind of their design aesthetic. You know, there were some artists that, you know, had more of a graffiti style with text, and, you know, they really liked that she was kind of focusing on the natural area. So the, all the finalists, they were kind of on that West Coast.
Thank you for the clarification.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so I've, I attended the event, and I was, I was really impressed with the number of people that turned out. I love the fact that the artist is a skateboarder herself, and that she tried to incorporate parts of the skateboard. So when you're looking at this slide over on the left hand, you see the two squirrels in the tree, and when I see that sort of thing, I'm thinking they're holding nuts, but they're actually holding the bolts to the skateboard. So, thank you.
Anything else?
I mean, I'll just echo that, I thought the dedication was a fantastic event, the Skate Jam itself, which is becoming, what, the third annual at this point, event, I think is a really terrific event, brings out a variety of ages, participants, and, you know, can't beat like a terrific sunny day in Memorial Park with a bunch of people and some music, and, so it was a really good opportunity for the community to come together. And I'm glad that your presentation started off with the pictures before the mural was in place, because now I feel like I, I can't even remember what it looked like, you know, pre-mural, and this is so fantastic. It just underscores what a great improvement this was to the space, to have the mural added there, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to all the community members that were part of the selection process, and, you know, there was a lot of people that had a hand in this, so thank you to everyone.
Well, thank you for all those comments, and I wanted to add that, again, there's a lot more to say. You can look on the city's website to read about the origin of this Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission. I didn't bring it with me, but I think the strategy, I know the strategy book is about this big, and this is the, the, the fact that we have this commission represents years of people coming to the city, writing emails, coming to open houses, answering surveys, and wanting to have a presence for art in our community, and that the, the city hired a consultant to gather all of this, and all of the, the comments that were related to these areas, and this mural is just one of them. One of the things that came out of the study was how we have had some really vibrant festivals in our city over the years, the Kids Fun Run with Kiwanis, the Arts Festival, various things that have reached really big dynamic peaks, and then perhaps it turns out, as you often see, two or three people are doing all the work, and it starts getting harder and harder to keep it going, and, and the consultant found that those things were really not sustainable, and how could the city help make it possible for those, those things to get established and grow and be sustained? So the events is one part of it, there's also a lot of interest in the performing arts space, but one of them is visual arts and public art in our community. So this committee has started by approving a public art policy, and this is what we're talking about tonight. And I really appreciate how this turned out, because it celebrates kids being outside, doing some really great physical activity. It is not scary, I mean, it's scary to watch somebody skateboarding, because I'm not going to ever try it, but it's really, and, and the fact that the skaters, I saw the various diagrams, some of them were very graphic, really neon colors, and completely different approach, and this is what the young people in our community wanted to see. And I just thought it was, it was just a great process to see what ended up being selected. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just the last comment, you mentioned that it was funded by a grant, it wasn't coming out of our taxpayers' money, right?
Yes, it was the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Program.
Thank you for bringing that up, and that comes from the metro tipping fee, because we have a transfer station in our city, and all of these huge garbage trucks come through, and at the present time, that is still a funding source, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our, our citizen input and community announcements.
Mayor, we have Kitakata presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I skipped that. We have another presentation, Kitakata Sister City Advisory Board. Please come forward, you've been waiting all this time, and they are going to present the 2024-25 Goals, and if you'd please introduce yourselves.
While they're bringing that up, council, thank you for having us. I'm Sammy Scarpone, I am the co-chair. Nice to see you all.
Thank you, and I'm Adrienne Skritzmeier, I am the chairperson of the Wilsonville-Kitakata Sister City Advisory Board. Before we begin sharing our goals tonight, I just want to provide a little bit of historical context about our board for any community members who may not be aware. The Wilsonville-Kitakata Sister City Advisory Board was adopted by the city council on December 7th of 2020 to support activities that sustain and advance the longstanding cultural relationship between the city of Wilsonville and Kitakata, Japan. Wilsonville has enjoyed a sister-city relationship with Kitakata since October of 1988, coming up on another anniversary here soon, and the goal of that relationship is to deepen the understanding and friendship between the two cities through programs in such fields as education, culture, and economy. The cities participate in student exchanges, and these exchanges have allowed host families to participate in local activities here and in Kitakata. The program was long sustained through the dedication of the Wilsonville Sister City Association, which was a volunteer group, and that was prior to the establishment of this as a city board. And in our role as an advisory board, we'd now like to present to council our proposed board goals for the upcoming year.
To start off with our goals, we would like to increase connections with AKIA and Wilsonville High School. The AKIA is our co-association, our equivalent over in Kitakata. We would like to create a shared mission and vision with the IZU-Kitakata International Association, and we would like to have board members as chaperones on future trips. Which leads us into engage Wilsonville youth. We would like to create a specific position on the board for a teen member to join us and recruit from our various social media outlets. We would like to expand education for the community, work with the DEI Committee and co-host speaker for existing speaker series. We would like to host a cooking class. We would like to host a cooking class. And we'd like to create and maintain one annual event that the board becomes specifically known for in the city. We want to continue to build awareness for Kitakata, Japan, and the sister city program that we have. Explore the feasibility of creating a Japanese garden of sorts in future parks projects. And then continue to table at events that the city hosts. And then one of our more successful programs, continue to provide home stays, continue to provide meaningful home stay programs for students visiting Wilsonville from Kitakata. Continue to survey past participants to get feedback on trip itineraries and their experiences and what they've learned with their time with the families. And then create moments, as some of the council know, moments within these itineraries for celebration.
And then our next goal is to adjust our bylaws to better position the board for longevity. This includes working with the legal department of the city to consider the possibility of becoming a standing committee rather than an advisory board. Adjust our bylaws to exclude term limits. That is perhaps not the best verbiage. Really, for a little more context, the relationships that citizens of Wilsonville and citizens of Kitakata have are very, very relationship focused. Currently, our bylaws state that board members can serve two consecutive three-year terms. And we're just looking for ways that folks who have long-term relationships with this board and with individuals in the city of Kitakata can still continue to participate in the things that our board does. And then create a specific position on the board for a teen member. Building a network of community resources. Inviting the consul general to visit Wilsonville. Having a joint meeting with Wilsonville Rotary to hear about their sister city program in Columbia. And leveraging JAZO, which is the Japan-America Society of Oregon, which the board is a member of, to introduce Kitakata businesses to the American market. And then connect with external organizations such as JAZO, the Japanese-American Museum of Oregon, the Westland-Wilsonville School District, the Japanese consulate, the Wilsonville Rotary, Wilsonville Chamber, the Oregon Japanese Garden, and the Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, as well as other Japan and Oregon sister city groups and entities. Oregon is one of the states with the most sister city relationships with Japanese cities. So there's lots of partners that we have in other cities that we would like to reach out to, to build better connections and to learn from.
Thank you. Comments, councillors, your questions?
Thank you for your report. Your goals sound really ambitious and well thought out. I appreciate that. I'm curious, how many people are on your board? And are you guys interested in, you know, talking to other people that might be interested in joining or helping you?
Absolutely. We're always looking for more community input and additional people to apply for the board when that is an option. I don't know that we have any open spots right now. And I believe we have nine people on our board. Is that accurate?
Yes. And no open positions to answer your question at the moment.
Again, thank you for the presentation. And it's great to get this overview. I noticed the item about creating a specific position on the board for a teen member. I thought that was a fantastic idea. And I really support ways that we can bring our youth into the various committees and boards and organizations within our city. I think it's beneficial for, you know, all involved. I know that this is something that has been an important piece of the DEI committee. And I wonder if members of the DEI committee might actually even have some reflection or feedback on that process that they would be willing to share with you. So maybe, I'm misspeaking here, but I think the DEI committee has two positions for students. And I wonder if the dynamic of having two is helpful in kind of just having a buddy too. And, you know, because there is a power differential in coming into a group of adults and trying to explain, you know, your perspective. And so, I don't know. I haven't been in those meetings. And so there might be those that have been in those meetings that could help share. And I wonder if that's something that would be fruitful for the Kitakata Advisory Board too. I love the idea of bringing youth into this specific aspect because they've been involved in the exchanges and it just makes sense. Yeah.
I have a clarifying question. When was your last board member opening?
I believe we've had maybe one in the last 12 months.
I believe that's correct, yeah. We had one new member. Other than that, I may have been, two years ago, the newest member.
I believe we've had some newer members since then.
You're correct, yes.
There does tend to be some turnover. I can't speak more directly to that right now, though.
Yeah, I'd like to see you go back and do a little bit more work on the term limits side because I hear no openings, which makes me ask a question is how, is it exclusive or inclusive?
Absolutely.
So that, yeah, there's some clarifying information about when can someone new come in and be more welcoming to other members of the community, particularly because you're requesting to have this become a standing committee. So we need to be able to know that, like I said, it needs to be more inclusive rather than exclusive. So if you could just go back and do a little bit more work on that, it'd be great.
Absolutely. And I think we're definitely still in the exploration of this to see what it could look like versus having any specific thoughts so far. So, more to come.
And I think like all of the, you know, some of our committees were started a very long time ago. So the charters have been around for a long time. But I know in the case of the new committees that I've observed and even reading old charters, they start off with staggered terms so that everybody doesn't start with three-year terms. So somebody starts with a one-year term. And so that you have, you don't have turnover all at once. I think that's one reason for when you get a new person. And also, some people were willing to do a short term to begin with and let other new people come in. As far as your comment or your idea about having the opportunity for some long-term involvement, I think that I can see where that's coming from and maybe, or the reason for that. And it is unique because of this relationship with this Kitakata city, which as we know is way older than Oregon. And they have long-term involvement. And so perhaps there could be another title for a position so that because we do, we do want to operate in a similar fashion to the other committees. So perhaps, you know, keep the terms somewhat as they are, but add a couple of other positions that are, we have to ask the city attorney for some examples, whether they're called associates or ex officio or something like that. Because I can see that in this case, if all the people that they knew kind of, they're new people a lot, what happened to those people we met? It kind of disturbs the relationship. So that probably does need to be an example that we can look at from another city and see what they did there.
I'll add that we do have emeritus members that were very, very longstanding when it was not a city committee. That were really kind of the lifeblood of that committee for many years and keeping the sister city relationship going. So I think it's wanting to find a way that we can still work within the city parameters, but help ensure that the relationship continues for many, many years still.
Just to tag on, it's kind of unique because you're working with an Asian culture that really, really emphasizes relationships. And so it's like we need to work it all out, but that's a really important factor.
And just to reflect, I'm glad to have had the opportunity to travel with both of you. And some of us did for the 35th anniversary to meet the mayor of Kitakata and the city staff. And they know Wilsonville. They have been here for so many years. It was really incredible. And I remember going to a city park, which was actually an indoor building that they had built because of the nuclear accident with the earthquake. And parents were obviously afraid to go to any park because there might be nuclear waste there. And so remember that indoor building that was the playground and it was free for everyone to come? And they also had a nursing school upstairs. But coincidentally, I think it was coincidental, there was a woman there with a baby who years ago had been an exchange student here. We met several of them. So having those friendships is so valuable. So do you have any other questions for us?
Not at this time.
So I think I heard a number at some point where there's been 400 people that have been exchanged between the two cultures. Is that correct?
There's been quite a few. I went on an exchange there in 1996. So these exchanges have been going on for a very long time.
And some of the people are multi-generations, where a brother and a sister, or maybe the parents have come. A lot of people have been to Wilsonville, where I know people in Portland who don't know, they haven't been to Wilsonville.
And Sammy, you also went on exchange.
Yes, yeah, we're very fortunate that a lot of the people on this committee were sort of alumni, both of the high school, of the city, of the program. It was very influential for me when I was a high schooler here. So it's very much an honor to serve still on this board.
Thank you. And we should mention the important tie between the city and the high school, which has been a long-term value. We have such high-performing high schools. And I believe this started with a couple of people, one of whom was the Japanese language teacher at Wilsonville High School. And I did hear when we visited the Japanese consulate, a figure, a statistic that I think Oregon has the highest number of students in high school taking Japanese language classes, something like that. So probably having these exchange courses helps with that. Well, thank you very much. And we can ask our city attorney to help out?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, sorry I jumped ahead over that really great presentation. Thank you. And so that brings us now to citizen input and community announcements. And before you read that section, city attorney, I wanted to say that, or just check something out here. We also have, so we have our regular citizen input, which is right now, three-minute input. We also have a public hearing, which is on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. And I'm assuming that the people who have filled out cards related to that topic would like to speak during that hearing. So it's relevant to that. So I'm seeing nodding. So please go ahead and read this. And I will ask for the people who are on other topics at this point and then come to the others.
Welcome to the City of Wilsonville City Council meeting. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on any matter concerning city business or any matter over which the council has control. It is also a time to address items not on the agenda. It is also a time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff in the city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up either by completing a speaker card at the side of the room or by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You will need to provide your name, address, and topic you will be discussing. Information on engaging with the city council can be found on the city council's webpage at ci.wilsonville.or.us/citycouncil. The mayor is the presiding officer and preserves order and decorum during the city council meetings. Pursuant to Wilsonville Code Section 2.003 Subsection 14, those who testify have, those who have signed up to speak during citizen input have three minutes to testify. A timer will indicate when your time is done. As a reminder, when you begin your comments, state your name for the record and state your address or state that your address is provided on your speaker card. The city council wants to hear from all community members who want to address the council. Please be respectful of others by avoiding talking or other distracting conduct while others are providing their comments to council. The presiding officer or city staff may instruct anyone who's causing a disruption to stop so the council can continue to complete its official business. Additional disruptions may lead to removal from the meeting so the meeting can continue to proceed in an orderly manner. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So my first card is for Adam Cunningham. And I do have addresses on these cards. So you don't have to state your address. But if you could just state your addresses on file and you live in Wilsonville or not in Wilsonville. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adam Cunningham. My information's on the speaker card. I'm a concerned Wilsonville citizen and a candidate for Wilsonville City Council. I was also recently honored to be called out by the taxpayer-funded city newspaper, The Boons Ferry Messenger. I was not featured in an expose for my volunteer work in the community or interviewed about my campaign for a seat on council. But instead, I was honored for having my last public testimony questioned in the newly minted myth-busting section of the paper. This month's myth-busting section was disappointing. It was disappointing because it relied on a straw man argument that the Town Center Plan adds 8,000-plus new residents to Wilsonville. It cited public testimony as one of the two, as one of the sources of supposed misinformation. Well, I was the only one to bring up that number in public testimony in recent history. And when I talked about the Town Center Plan on August 5th, in my public testimony on August 5th, I said, "I implore our city to honestly engage with our citizens to find out if citizens really want to add over 8,000 people into a small area in our city center." I said, "people," not residents. An important distinction that should not be used as a basis to straw man my arguments. I took those numbers from the city's own 2019 Town Center Findings Report. That report shows a projected 8,451 people in Town Center, including 3,831 residents. However, if you take a look at the 2021 Town Center Plan, with its colorful charts and artist renditions of numerous four- and five-story buildings, you'll find that the total of number of residents being added to the Town Center area was scrubbed from that document and replaced with the letters N/A, leaving residents to guess at residential density plans and have to dig through other reports like I do. And in fact, there are some other interesting, other interesting documents that only local government nerds like me would bother reading. These documents include Urban Renewal Task Force Meeting Minutes and the Town Center Urban Renewal Feasibility Study, published in November of 2023. These documents show that between the task force meeting in June of 2023 and August of 2023, the commercial space and residential unit assumptions for funding Town Center increased by over 250%. 430,000 square feet there to 1.2 million here. Also, they also increased the number of residences being built to 4,179. I sat down with city staff today and asked them if that number was a feasible number. And they said that number could be possible. That should scare every resident of our city. Thank you for my three minutes of freedom.
Thank you. And if you would like to provide any, you know, written testimony so we have that, we'd be glad to have it. So that we can follow up. Thank you. And I now have Paul Fruen.
Hi, Paul Fruen. I'm a 22-year resident of the city. And until about four years ago, I wasn't really involved in citizen action, citizen civic action or whatever. And some circumstances happened then that caused me to change that. At this stage of my life, I am really focusing on helping we, the people, understand what our role in government is. That we have a role and an obligation to let our elected officials know what we want to be done to us, for us, about us, in a city, a county, a state, a nation, a school board, or whatever. And so in that, in that role, what I'm doing right now, I'm realizing how important it is to also address the government. also address the government agencies as well, to make sure that you understand that this really is all about we, the people. And what I've noticed in the 20-plus years that I've been here in Wilsonville is I've seen an increasing ideological shift towards one ideology versus another. And that's what really prompted me to start getting more involved. That's not what government's supposed to be all about. It's not supposed to be about Republicans, Democrats, conservatives, liberals, whatever you want to call it. It's supposed to be all of us working together and for us citizens to let you know, and then for you to guide and direct your staffs to do what the citizens want to do. So that's why I'm here, because I have seen, and I've testified to you guys before, to tell you that I'm really concerned, that I don't think you're doing a really good job trying to get the input from all the city. And so I'm speaking, I understand the three of you probably won't be on the council or won't be on the council next year. So I'm speaking now as much to those people who are going to be running for your positions in the next city council, to let them know that you have to find a better way to seek input from all of the citizens of Wilsonville. Because I think it's been very tainted towards one ideology versus another. I think Adam's presentation was just excellent relative to the whole Town Center thing that's going on. I do a lot of canvassing in Wilsonville for candidates and for initiatives. And in my canvassing of Wilsonville, I hear a lot of people, when you knock on their doors and you have an opportunity to talk to them, that are not happy with the direction Wilsonville's going. So when I hear these surveys that have been done that says, "Everybody's for this," or "Everybody's for that," and there's like 400 to 2,000 or whatever surveys, I'm saying, "Wait a minute, that doesn't represent the city of Wilsonville." So my encouragement to you, because you're all still here for the next however many months, is to make sure that you find a way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I have a card for Elizabeth Peters, talking about communication and engagement. Okay. And she has?
Perfect, thank you. Mayor and council, I'm Elizabeth Peters, and you have my address. During the winter, my husband and I enjoy peaches that were picked, processed, and stored the previous summer. When everyone else is eating fruit imported from other states and countries, we are eating outstanding Willamette Valley peaches. Growing and processing the peaches before you takes a lot of time, focus, and effort. If the tree isn't healthy, a number of problems can make the fruit tough to process. The farmer needs a successful tree to have a successful crop. And the tree needs to do its job to produce delicious fruit. Canning peaches recently, it made me think about something I've observed here in our city. I envision a farmer, a tree, and the fruit. The farmer is city hall. The tree is Wilsonville citizens and businesses, and the fruit is the outcome of decisions. For the orchard farmer, a successful crop requires observing each tree and tending to its needs for fertilizer, irrigation, pruning, and a lot more. Peaches also need adequate time on the tree to get ready for major changes in their environment. The tree wants to thrive, but it needs the right environment. A tree could survive alone for years. It'll still produce fruit, but it won't have the same quality as the cultivated tree. A pest or disease could spread throughout the tree and even hit other trees. Should that happen, the farmer can say, "Oh, I've done everything necessary for this orchard. What's the problem?" The farmer could even blame the tree. But that doesn't make the problem go away. The tree has responsibility too. It can blame the farmer, but that doesn't make the problem go away. As a 30-year resident here, I see a growing division between the city and its residents. The way we communicate is breaking down, and I'm concerned. We don't have the same community feel that we used to have, and I think you feel the same. Like the farmer, even when we think we're doing our very best in tending the orchard, we may not be aware of real issues with the tree. Now, I know we have public hearings and we follow protocols for outreach, but it's been my experience that engaging busy, distracted people and listening, excuse me, busy, distracted people and listening meaningfully to concerns, it takes more than that. That's why I'm running for city council. In my professional and volunteer work, I'm a connector who brings people of very different thinking together to do amazing things. I'm running so the tree can be healthy, to feed the fruit that we all want to enjoy in our future. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I hope we will all enjoy the fruit of our listening and talking with each other this winter. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So before we go to the next section, which is counselor comments and liaison reports, as the city attorney mentioned, we, and you see right here on the screen, we hear things at these, you know, the citizen input, that sometimes we have the answer to right now, sometimes we have to research it. And so I would like to research the material that Mr. Cunningham gave, so that we can look at that and find out where any confusion is, because that's very important. So I want to look at that, but I can't do that right now. And about communicating with our citizens, it is really important. And I ran for city council for the first time in 2012 and was elected, and I was very surprised to see mostly the same few people came to all of the meetings. One or two times, it was filled with a whole bunch of people who held up signs or something and were all about one topic, but most people were not there. And of course, you're all here. It's a lot more comfortable to be at home on your couch or doing something more comfortable than sitting in these chairs. So I recognize it's not the most fun thing to do on an evening, so I appreciate everybody being here. And so how do we communicate with people? How do we get the word out? Do we try? Do we use all the legal means? Yes, we do. You know, this Boons Ferry Messenger, the staff works very hard, puts this in print, and I think the reason we keep doing that is because in surveys, it is showing that it is widely read. So stopping it, throwing it out, not doing it anymore, doesn't seem like a good idea. So this is one way. There's an article about the ODOT here, open house coming up. I hope a lot of people come to that. We also advertise that many different ways and on the internet, put things in the paper. I'm telling you, it's not easy to get people to come to these things. Some things are very well-attended. Our parks classes, I just had a meeting with one of our residents who wanted to introduce a kind of a community-wide fitness, like a Blue Zones idea. We met with our Parks Department staff, who are very receptive to the idea. However, they had to tell us that they are not able to add any more staff. Their events are very well-attended, you know, they're packed, the programs that they put on. And if they're going to add more programs, they probably need to either eliminate something or add more staff. And to make that Blue Zone idea go forward, which everybody thought was a good idea, it probably needs to be a collaboration between groups, residents, the city, and do it that way. So I look forward to ideas on the ways we can get more people to come to things. I am pleased that this year is the 10th Annual Civics Academy. We've had about 400 people attend that in 10 years. And I was asked to give a presentation on that at a recent meeting of cities. There were two or three other presenters that have done this recently. So that's been an effort to try to get a lot of people to learn about city government. And the advert that's going to be advertised soon, we advertised for 25 people, but I understand from our staff that gets all the applications. We can take about 35. I don't think you've really had that many, more than 35. So that helps. And I'm pleased that we have more people applying for the boards and commissions each time than there are openings. And so the worst part about that is have to sound out an email to quite a few people each time, saying, "I'm sorry that you weren't selected," because if there's one position open and six people applied, most of them didn't get in. Some people apply a couple of different times, and that's really what it takes. But I'm sure there are some other ways that we can do this in addition to the legal notices in the paper, the emails, and the social media. So I appreciate the ideas and look forward to seeing what can be done. With that, I will move to counselor comments and liaison reports, starting with Council President Ovrival.
Thank you. See, since our last meeting, I was able to attend the skatepark mural dedication that we previously discussed. That was a great event. And thank you to all of staff and community member volunteer support in putting that on. I also want to thank staff for all of the work that went into the city party in the park this year. I was a little nervous because we kind of had a cloudy day, but we had a terrific turnout. I didn't feel a raindrop during the evening. It was still lovely. And during that event, I was able to meet with a lot of community members. We had a booth there. Counselor Dunwell and I were in the booth, and perhaps Counselor Dunwell will want to share about those conversations, because we were able to talk with a lot of community members there and hear about what's happening for them, what are their thoughts, and what are they seeing. It was a great evening. I was also able to kind of help out at the booth for the Economic Development Department and help hand out a survey that is about childcare needs in the city. And that survey was put together by members of the Wilsonville Childcare Consortium. So recently, since our last meeting, we had a consortium meeting there and worked on putting together that survey as well. And finally, I would like to share some information about the upcoming Hispanic Heritage Month. And in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, the city's DEI Committee will be hosting a speaker series event on September 17th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Wilsonville Public Library. These speaker events have been very popular with the community, and they are free speaker events. This one will feature Anthony Veliz, founder of Poder, Oregon's Latino Leadership Network. And this will be the first of up to seven planned speaker series events that will be for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025. You can find out more information about the event and the other seven upcoming events on the city's website. And Hispanic Heritage Month really highlights the resilience, the cultural richness of communities from Mexico, from Central and South America, the Caribbean, and other places as well. And this month serves as a time for all of us to reflect and appreciate the many impactful contributions, contributions in the arts, in sciences, in literature, in business, in public service, and many other areas as well. So I invite us all to participate in that this month. And that is it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Berry.
Thank you. So this month, so with the city council, we not only attend these meetings, but we each take our time and volunteer to represent the city at various committees. And so for August, different activities that I participated in included August 6, the Housing Our Future Committee, where we're talking about what our current housing inventory is and figuring out strategies of how we can meet the statewide goals. On August 16, I was able to attend the housing tour in Wilsonville, where we did the residential development opportunity that the mayor described earlier in tonight's meeting. I got to attend the August 4 Skate Jam ribbon cutting. Kristen was the lead on that. The staff did an excellent job, and we had really good community participation. And August 26, there was the Wilsonville Transit Oriented Development Groundbreaking for the new Voila building that's going to be built. But you know, talking about communications, I really would like to highlight the Boons Ferry Messenger. This is just so full of information. It's delivered to everybody who lives here in Wilsonville in the mill. You can go online to the city website and look it up. You can stop at the library and pick it up. But for this month, there's just so much information. But I'd like to point out, on page three, we're talking about the September 7 Preparedness Fair, where you get your home ready in case there is an emergency. Hopefully, we'll never have it, but you know, an earthquake, a wildfire, another ice storm, who knows? And then if you go to page four and five, it has steps that everybody can take to be prepared. Just so much information. The other things that I'd like to highlight is, I guess it's on the back page, has a couple events that are coming up. The Charbonneau Annual Art Festival is going to be held on October 11th and 13th. And I've been to it. It's really a great event. I hope that other people can go. And then what we were mentioning early, the September 17 DEI Speaker Series, it gives you some information on who the speaker is and where and when the time will be. So please take your time and read this. It's such a great tool. And then, you know, you have opportunity to reach out to the city staff and the council if you have questions. So that's my report.
Thank you. Counselor Dunwell.
I am so glad to see a full house. It's really nice to see. Wouldn't it be cool if it was like this every time? It's boring, right? But it's really big stuff at the same time. So I welcome all of you to come back every single meeting and join us, because there's a lot to learn and a lot to see. So I've been really, I know there's been other conversations from other counselors about communication, but as I think several of you know that are out in the audience, that it's been something of high importance to me, that we talk to each other and we find a place where we can all meet. So I went to, because I hear that we're not. We're talking at each other, not to each other. That doesn't ever work. And when people have concerns, if you peel away a couple of the layers, you start to understand the essence of where those concerns are coming from. And I'm hopeful that as a city, by getting there, we can start to have those conversations and make them real and not look at each other as the other side. So one of the things, I went to our city manager and our mayor and others, and I said, "You know, we've got the city block party coming up. We need to be there." And so we went. And Counselor Ovrival joined me for a bit of time, and we had a table and we gave away some swag. But it was kind of fun. People didn't know what the back of those phone things were for. It's like, what do I do with this? So we, but we gave away some city things that we had in storage here, and so that was fun. But I had, so we had communication forms that people could fill out, and some of them did. But everybody was there to have a party at the park, right? So they didn't necessarily want to fill out a form, but they did want to talk. And I heard a couple of big, really big things, items that came up over and over again. And for most of the families that stopped by that wanted to talk, I was surprised at what they wanted to talk about, and they wanted to know if there was a place for the kids to go. They were actually asking about a community center or a place where they could go with their young children, you know, whether it's a rec center or whatever it may be. They're, a lot of them are likely newer families because... A lot of them are likely newer families because, as some of you may know, I think it was in 2016, a community center came up for vote and it failed. So we have to move on because first and foremost, we must always respect the voters of the city. And if they vote something down, then we have to respect that. Now maybe it's time to bring that back up again. So the other thing I heard was, you guys aren't talking to each other. So there were a lot of conversations about that. So and they, you know, whether they spoke about, you know, some empty properties around the city, or why are businesses moving out, or we need a new restaurant, or we need, you know, we want food carts, things like that. But there was a lot of really good, healthy conversation, and I think that's our starting point. It wasn't adversarial, it was friendly. And so I'm really looking forward to, and I know that the mayor and council and the city staff agree that we want to start that dialogue. So we are working on that here on this end, so it's not just the three minutes because communication is key. And we will get there. So just, you know, give us patience. We're having those conversations about how we can listen to the citizens outside of the three minutes and how we can start listening to each other and talking to each other rather than at each other. So I know I saw some of you there. I saw a couple of the candidates there and got to have some conversations with them. So that was the city block party in a nutshell. And then the other thing is, is one of the really cool things you get to do when you're have some visibility, public visibility, is you get invited by really surprising groups to do something. So the fire chief from TVFR invited me to be a fireman of the day, for the day. So on the 27th of September, this is upcoming, I get to actually go and spend, I think it's a 27-hour period as a true TVFR fireperson. I get to wear the outfit and climb the ladder and drive a truck and do a hose and all of that. And I will be absolutely sure to share that with all of you. I did have the opportunity, right after I was sworn in, to spend an evening in a Friday night shift with some of our wonderful officers with the Wilsonville Police Department and got to ride along and see all the things and became really involved. So I want you to know that as councillors, we're all doing our best to try and become more actively involved and to be an active and really important voice and part of this community. And part of doing it is by really understanding what's happening when you peel back the layers, whether it's a conversation or understanding what the fire department does, or even being present at a park. I've got a couple of other things coming up with the French Prairie Forum, which I'm a part of, where we talk about some of the things that are going on in other areas of the community. And then, of course, we will have another city council meeting later this month, and I'd love to see a full house again. So thank you all.
Thank you, councillor Dunwell. Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. If the city attorney will please read the titles.
Resolution number 3129, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville adopting the city of Wilsonville representation in the updates to the Clackamas County Multijurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Resolution number 3131, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Musco Athletic Lighting LLC to construct the Memorial Park Athletic Field Lighting Project. Resolution number 3155, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Harper Howf Peterson Regellas, Inc., HHPR, for the engineering consulting services for the Brown Road Improvements Project, Capital Improvement Project Number 4216. Resolution number 3156, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Inline Commercial Construction, Inc., for the Smart Yard Expansion Project, Capital Improvement Project Number 81448, and minutes of the June 17, 2024 city council meeting.
Thank you. Council president Ovrival, could I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Your honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
The motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. That brings us to our public hearing. And would the city attorney please read the title?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 893, an ordinance of the city of Wilsonville adding sections 2.380 through 2.386 to the Wilsonville Code concerning the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee.
Thank you. Tonight, we will have a public hearing to consider on first reading ordinance number 893. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start with a staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I will ask everyone who signed up in advance to testify first in the order in which they signed up. Then I will ask if anyone present in council chambers would like to testify, and then I will, let me see, yes, and then I will ask each person, anyone who is on the Zoom meeting who has not testified would like to testify to do so. After each person testifies, councillors may pose questions to me to be addressed by the person who testified or to the staff to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the city council has heard from everyone and the city council is satisfied, has all the information it needs to render a decision, the public hearing will be closed. Council deliberates, and I will announce the result. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that you refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with what someone before you has said, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has been previously said. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is one minute remaining. The public hearing is now open. Ms. Monburt, will you please read the staff's presentation?
Absolutely. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Zoe Monburt. I am the assistant to the city manager here at the city, and this evening I'm here to provide the staff report for ordinance number 893, which would add the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, also known as the DEI Committee, to the city of Wilsonville Code. The city council heard from the committee's chair and vice chair and provided feedback on the code language at the August 5 city council meeting. For those unfamiliar with the committee, I will provide an overview of their work as well as a summary of the proposed new code sections 2.380 through 2.386 to the Wilsonville City Code. I'd like to provide a little bit of background of how we got here this evening. First of all, the planning commission made a recommendation as they were reviewing the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, that the city look at establishing an equity committee. The council then adopted the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan in June of 2020 by resolution. The resolution number 2820 included a statement that during the planning commission's deliberation of the plan, planning commission members expressed the desire for the committee or other city-appointed body to review, with a lens towards promoting equity and inclusion, future city plans, projects, and other city issues. Council then met with community members and held a listening session in December of 2020 before directing, which occurred before directing staff to establish the committee. The city council then established the committee by resolution in May of 2021, after months of discussion with the community. Since that time, the DEI committee has established and prioritized their strategic plan and has actively worked towards their mission, which is, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee serves to connect Wilsonville to the diverse perspectives and lived experiences of its people. They advocate for equitable access and opportunity for every community member. They identify barriers to participation and inclusion and pursue programs, policies, partnerships, and ideas that remove those barriers. Due to their ongoing work, they requested to become a standing committee. They reviewed their bylaws in detail before proposing the requested code language. I will also note that the city's legal team reviewed the bylaws and identified the appropriate section within the city code before this came to city council. The council discussed the proposed draft code sections at the December, or excuse me, well, the August 5 city council meeting, and requested that the sentence "committee members may be removed for misconduct or nonperformance of duty by motion passed by majority of the city council" be removed from section 2.383.e. The Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee understood the reasoning behind that change and did not oppose the change, which was reflected in the draft code language that is in front of you for review this evening. These are just a few of the city, the city's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee's accomplishments. The committee provides recommendations to staff when requested. Most recently, they provided input on the city's procurement policy, as well as assisting the engineering and planning departments with their street naming convention for the town center area. They also provide letters of support for city grant applications and provide articles to the Boones Ferry Messenger to elevate lived experiences of its community members. They have also curated a speaker series to elevate historically marginalized voices. They've hosted four Juneteenth events and worked to create a sense of belonging for all in Wilsonville. Another way that the committee has tried to reach diverse portions of the community was by hosting a Los Posadas event this past December, which is generally of significance to the Hispanic population. It was well-attended by both English and Spanish speakers. Moving forward, the committee will continue to elevate historically marginalized communities, partner with city boards and departments, and provide free events with engaging and educational content for the community to make people feel welcome and included. Based on the nature of their work, the representation that they provide to the community, they requested to become a standing committee. To do so, the bylaws would be added to Chapter 2 in new section 2.380 through 2.386 of Wilsonville Code. The purpose of the committee is to advise the Wilsonville City Council on policy decisions related to diversity, equitable outcomes, and inclusion, making recommendations to the council on public engagement strategies and methods by which residents have the opportunity to better participate in decision-making, advising the council on culturally responsive service delivery, programming, and communication strategies, creating, updating, and overseeing progress on the city's DEI strategic plan, and identifying local community leaders and building more leadership capacity in Wilsonville's diverse communities. The council will appoint the members to the committee, who bring their lived experiences regardless of their immutable traits, including but not limited to race, ethnicity, LGBTQ+ gender, socioeconomic status and history, differently abled, and age, among other identities. Appointed members will be expected to think broadly in terms of how issues of racism, sexism, ableism, and other discriminatory and prejudicial biases can impact all community members in Wilsonville. All of the members of this 13-member committee can vote. There are 11 adult positions. They have terms for three years, and they can serve two full terms before meetings take a one-year hiatus before they are then eligible again to reapply. There are two student members on this committee, and they are appointed for up to two one-year terms. The original intent behind this was to allow students to contribute without it being as daunting to make the commitment because high school students have so much to balance. There's also an attendance policy for this committee. The committee members that miss five meetings in one calendar year are automatically removed from the committee. There was a lot of interest from the community in order to participate on this committee, and the committee cannot do their work without active participation of its members. The DEI committee felt that it was important to add this language to their bylaws, which they did add in December of 2023 by resolution 3104. The organizational structure of the committee is also included, which is similar language to many of our other committees, such as the need to annually appoint the chair and vice chair, the need for the committee to meet at least four times a year. The committee can meet without a quorum, but not vote on issues without a quorum. Committee members can attend in person, by video conference, or by telephone. They must follow public meeting laws. All members can vote, and a majority vote is needed to pass a motion, as well as the process to recommend an amendment to the bylaws, which would require another ordinance if ordinance 893 is adopted. Here is the process that the committee has been working through and where we are currently. As you can see, the green star is the public hearing where we are today. Should this be adopted on first reading, we would bring this back to you on September 16 for a second reading, and then the ordinance states that it would be effective 30 days from that point in time, which would be October 16. With that, staff recommends that the city council adopt ordinance 893 on first reading.
Thank you for that very detailed summary, and I'm looking at some of the other materials that, you know, we have the detailed materials, but we won't try to read all of them here. Thank you for the summary. So at this point, after the staff presentation, I would like to ask if any councillors have a question for the staff? No questions? Okay. Now we will, for public testimony, we will start with the people who signed up in advance to testify, and our standard procedure is to remember to include your name and address for the record, but of course, you can say my address is on file, and I would like you to add if you live in the city of Wilsonville or otherwise. And I do have the first three speaker notices that I received, starting with Erica Pham.
Hi, good evening. My name is Erica Pham, and my address is on file with the city recorder. My wife and I purchased a home in Vilbo in 2018. We started our home search looking for a small condo in Portland, and thanks to our savvy realtor, we're very happy with our decision to be here in Wilsonville. Over the past six years, we started a family here and become more invested in the community's people, schools, and businesses. We want Wilsonville to feel as welcoming and inclusive for everyone else as it has for us, regardless of people's age, income, ability, race, ethnicity, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, or any other consideration. I have served as an unpaid volunteer on the city's DEI committee since its inception in the summer of 2021. I have previously served as a member and as chair. I am currently the vice chair. In my past three years, I've seen significant outreach and impact because of the DEI committee's efforts and coordination with the city of Wilsonville. Our vision is to be a beacon of connectivity in the city to help ensure everyone who lives, works, and attends school, sorry, or visits Wilsonville feels a sense of belonging here. We do not, we do this through actions like supporting city grant applications for more accessible playgrounds for our kids, hosting speakers who are willing to share their knowledge and lived experience with our community, and holding cultural events like Juneteenth and Los Posadas, where everyone can come together to celebrate. The DEI committee's work is significant because improving life for some people in our community improves lives for all. When everyone feels like they belong here, there are stronger community ties, better public services, greater economic growth, more cultural enrichment, and less violent crime. Adam Grant articulated it better than me. It's more important to be good ancestors than dutiful descendants. Too many people spend their lives being custodians of the past instead of stewards of the future. We worry about making our parents proud when we should be focused on making our children proud. The responsibility of each generation is not to please our predecessors, it is to improve conditions for our successors. I believe it's important to make the DEI committee a standing committee to ensure everyone else in Wilsonville feels welcome and included here, too. I want our children to be glad they grew up here and excited to come back and raise their own families. I also have a statement from Jay Edwards, who's a DEI committee member who couldn't be here tonight. He wanted to reach out in support of adding the DEI committee bylaws to the city code. The DEI committee has two members who attended Wilsonville High School, and the Wilsonville High School Black Student Union has been a major partner in the last three Juneteenth events. The fact that these busy young people have the high-minded sensibility to invest their time and effort into something bigger than themselves is impressive by itself, but their consistency and the energy they bring to their involvement is extremely encouraging. The community-building schools that they develop and demonstrate, they bring back to their classrooms, sport teams, and student organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, excuse me, Erica, before you leave, I'm going to do this on each speaker.
Yes.
With these very specific instructions here.
Yes.
So after each speaker, I'm going to ask So after each speaker, I'm going to ask, does any councillor have a question for this speaker? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker card is Carla Bruchir.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Carla Bruchir. I'm the current chair of the DEI committee. I'm a Salvadorian American. I moved to Wilsonville in 2019. I'm the mom of two biracial boys. I started to volunteer with the DEI committee because I wanted to make this community better for my children. I want you to know that our committee has 13 people. We have members of the LGBTQ committee. We have members of the differently abled community. We have high school students, parents, and retirees. We have members who identify as Latino, Black, Asian, Native American, and other ethnic backgrounds. We have Christians, Muslims, Buddhists, and agnostics. I had the privilege of addressing you at our last committee meeting, or at your last meeting, where I believe it was Councilwoman Dunwell who asked for a summary of how our community was directly impacted by the DEI committee. And I've reflected on that since then. I can only come up with my own examples of that, but it is always through our committee to create this impact. The first one I can think of is at the Las Posadas event that we threw in December of 2023. I spoke to a Spanish-speaking mother. After I had made a speech, both in English and Spanish, welcoming our community members, to say that if I could just impact one person who felt more included because of putting on the Las Posadas event, the committee would accomplish its goal. And that mom told me that we accomplished our goal. Thereafter, my sons have had playdates with her sons on multiple occasions. Another example is that our speaker series invited an Iranian Baha'i person to speak at the speaker event. Baha'i is a religion that I knew nothing about, and I found myself having tea with this neighbor and exploring their culture and their religion. And the last example I have is that I met a Wilsonville High School teacher who put me in contact with a Wilsonville High School alum who was interested in immigration law, and that student now works at my firm. So I would like to just say that these three examples might be minor to the community and the council, but for those three examples, my son might make a lifelong friend, which is my hope, that Wilsonville student or alum might have their career path. And I hope that we can continue to do the work that we do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And excuse me, Carla, before you go, does anyone have any questions for this speaker? Okay, thank you.
Sure. I just, I really appreciate your presentation, both of your presentations, and that you were pointing out the makeup of your committee. I think that's really important, that it really truly represents different elements of our city. So that, like what we were talking about earlier, communication, that the more opportunities that we can talk with, you know, people that aren't exactly like ourselves, I think the better. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and the next card is for Asha Patel.
Hello. My name is Asha. My address is on file. So I'm a senior at Wilsonville High School, and I've been student advocate for two years on this committee. And I'm just here to talk a little bit about, like, what DEI is to me and why I think it's important. So this August, the Family Empowerment Center, located kind of right next to Wilsonville High School and the primary school, puts on a school supply drive actually every year to support families in need in Wilsonville. I really love working there. I get to communicate and meet a lot of families that don't predominantly speak English. There's lots of Ukrainian families, Hispanic families, Chinese, Iranian, Indian. And the majority of people that walk in there, I've noticed tend to be very drawn into themselves, and they're very uncertain. There's kids that are ashamed to be there and parents that don't want to be there. But it's a really cool feeling when you get to just tell kids that there's like free fire hats and Kona ice in the gym. And you get to watch everybody smile, and the parents are like sighing because they're done with it. But everybody's walking out there with all the school supplies that they need, free food, free things. And it's a really awesome thing to be able to watch people go from apprehensive to feeling like their kid can partake in school, which is something I really cherish as a high school student and believe in deeply just because of a small event like a school supply drive. And so I promise I have a point. So DEI to me isn't about like pedestalizing individual communities. It's about breaking down barriers between the ones that we have in this city so everybody can get excited over fire hats in school, regardless of your language, socioeconomic background, race, and really any other part of your identity. And so a big part of that, right, is educating people about who coexists with us in the first place. If you want a true community, you need to be aware about everybody's struggles and perspectives. The Juneteenth celebration is a small example, but it's something that consistently connects people, whether you are conscious of it or not. Whether you're just passing by or you're actively engaging with the event, you end up getting something in your head. You're taking away something whether you know it or not. And I guess to kind of wrap it up, I do believe that this committee needs to have permanence because what we do, along with what I believe DEI is, is needed regardless of what the political landscape is. We help tie the fabric of this community together in a lot of different ways, and I think that speaks miles in itself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you leave, any questions or comments for Asha? I do have a question for you, but it might also be just one that we, I just, you might not have this, you could ask the staff, but I did want to find out, when you mentioned the Juneteenth event, I understand that the attendance at that has gone up every year and that the attendance at the speaker series has gone up. So do you know anything about that, or maybe one of the other speakers can talk about that?
I cannot give you exact numbers. I can tell you from watching the Juneteenth event that there has been significant increases in families that attend, but the speaker series would have to come from someone else.
All right. Thank you very much. And for all the speakers, if you have written testimony that you'd like to give to our city recorder so we have it, that would be great for our record. Okay. The next card is Paul Frueen.
Hello again, Paul Frueen. I talked to you before, so I don't need to do all that again. But I am here to encourage you to vote against making this a standing committee. And the reason for that is somewhat similar to the other things that I talked to you about earlier. I think I've been to several of the DIE committee meetings. Carla and Erica are great proponents of that. Carla particularly, you can't get anyone more enthusiastic and excited about what she's doing. And so as an old white man, I'm certainly not going to stand up here and say I'm against diversity, equity, and inclusion. That's not the issue here with me. The issue is a government issue again. Number one, I don't know if there was ever anything done with this committee, and I'm speaking about this committee because I have a little bit of knowledge about it compared to a lot of the other committees in the city. But was there ever any effort by the city, by staff or whoever, to go out to the city and say, do we need a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee here? I think it's great. I think the work they've done is great. I think it's needed in a community particularly that's not particularly diverse, I don't think. I don't have all the statistics on that. That's good that we're doing that. I just don't think we need to have another layer of government that is, you know, inculcated into the whole governmental structure. And I would say this about a lot more things. And I will as time goes on with the new council and all that. There's a lot of government that we don't need. And I've seen what happens with diversity, inclusion, and equity committees in other governmental agencies. Particularly, I'm very familiar with what happened with Glacamas County. That got out of control in my mind and the mind of a lot of others, and it was done away with because there was a lot of money put into it and a lot of money coming from outside put into it. And I don't think that's the way that we need to run our community. Even on this one, for example, the two meetings that I did attend, one of the meetings, I asked Zoe to provide me with a budget because I wanted to understand, how is this now being inculcated, not only in this committee, but in the whole Wilsonville city structure as well? I don't think that DIE should be the basis on which we hire people. I think there's other issues that need to be done with that. And so I would just encourage you not to vote on this. And maybe, I saw you have another second reading on this. Maybe in that month, you can somehow try to get more feedback from the community on whether the community really feels that we need to have this other level of government put in place. Thanks.
Excuse me. Before you go, we're asking, if you have a chance, any questions, please go ahead.
I do have a question for you. So you spoke about the conversation tonight is about whether or not we actually bring it into city code and as an ordinance on first reading. But I guess my bigger question is, is what I'm hearing from you is that you would like to see the DEI committee completely taken, broken apart?
No, not at all, not at all.
Can you just tell me what you're asking for then?
I just don't want it to be, DIE, that's the one I'm coming to talk about tonight. I could probably do this with a lot of other things, as I said. What I'm asking is that it not be further inculcated into the structure of the Wilsonville government because I know what will happen with that. It'll be elevated to a greater input in terms of hiring and staffing, all those kinds of things that I don't think needs to be a part of government.
So you would like to see it continue to exist but not brought in through this ordinance?
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Exactly.
So what do you see then, the benefit? I'm just struggling a little bit with what you're saying because you're saying that you're concerned about it, but yet you're saying you want it to still exist. So can you dive into that just a little bit more? Why one is good and you're okay with that, and the other is not? I'm really trying to seek to understand what you're trying to say. So I'm...
I don't know, Katie, how I can say this any better than what I've said relative to it becoming more a part of government. I think what they're doing and having, you know, seen them, the enthusiasm, having heard the testimony tonight, I mean, how can you disagree with that? Particularly a 73-year-old white man. I'm not going to do it. But what I am concerned about it becoming more a part of the government, I think it's great to have a committee. There's other committees, I think, in the government structure that are like that. I just don't think it needs to become elevated to a higher-level committee in the governmental structure.
Super quick question, and this is possibly to Brian and Amanda. How many of our committees are actually written into code as opposed to being an ad hoc committee? Is it just a ballpark percentage?
It's not about percentage, but Planning Commission, Budget Committee, Developmental G-Board.
The vast majority are in our code.
They're standing committees. They're standing committees. And what is the purpose for them being a standing committee?
Well, the Budget Committee is mandated by state law. Planning Commission, DRB, is because we separate quasi-judicial, and we have basically the DRB handle that. Some cities have their Planning Commission do policy and land use, so it's different for every committee.
And do we have other committees that are more community-focused that are also standing committees like this?
Well, our Planning Commission is considered our citizen involvement committee for the purposes of state law, so, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And can I just, I do want to add a clarification for Brian, on Brian's note. Is that very typically what you see with a committee, like the progress of a committee's sort of timeline of how it becomes a standing committee? Is usually it starts out, outside of ones that are mandated by state law, it starts out usually as a task force, then becomes a committee that's adopted by a resolution, and then eventually, if it's seen as something that council believes is going to be a committee that has a long-term place in the community, then that's usually when it gets considered for, to be a standing committee. So our Library Board, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, those are both examples of standing committees.
Very, very helpful. Thank you so much, and thank you for your feedback.
I'd like to say one more thing along that line. The inclusion part of this is what really concerns me because this is not an all-inclusive committee. We've heard, you know, it's representing, you know, a portion of the community that is not part of the diverse, that maybe not be as diverse as the rest of the community. It's addressing a lot of that, and that's great. We need that. That's what I'm encouraging all of you to do more, is to seek input from the community. And they should be, and I think are doing that from what they're doing. I'm just saying, I don't think it needs to be elevated in the whole governmental structure. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, Julie.
Before you leave, and this isn't necessarily a question for you. I just want to let you know that's, because we have these very specific ways we have to go through hearings. So I want to come back when I have a chance to speak again to tell you about how we did ask people about this committee. And maybe Zo covered that in the opening. You might have, there was a lot of information there. But if, I'm looking for a chance to share some of that later. I appreciate you asking that.
And I'd still like to have the budget. How DIE is inculcated in the city budget. How much money is being spent on that?
I'm sure we can get that.
Right. And that's just a little teeny piece of your budget. I know that. But I'm interested in that kind of stuff as a citizen of the city. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next is Court Malecki? I'm sorry if I didn't say that right.
Malecki.
Malecki?
Thank you. My name's Court Malecki. My address is on file, and I've been just about a five-year resident here of Wilsonville. So the first thing I'll say is, for public testimony, I find three minutes sometimes is probably not enough, but I know there's possibility to follow up on this. So what I'd like to point out, I think, what I see from a distance on this is, I find it a little hypocritical to look at, to go through the city's paper and to look at the council, and you're all here almost, and the mayor. And, you know, I don't see much diversity here. So we're going to go through this process of having a committee and go through, you know, and point all this diversity out, and I just don't see it. I've been to three or four or five city council meetings. I've never seen a dissenting vote on anything that's come up. And I know there's other reasons for doing that, but there's never, there's no, no dissension or discussion. It seems like it's all just the same ideology. And I have a feeling that's pretty pervasive throughout. And my problem isn't with the people that are on here, you people. It's the ideology and the thought process that goes behind it. I don't see any diversity in the thought. And I'm not super familiar with City Hall, but it seems like the ideology is very one-sided. And I think, it's my opinion, that bad policy can come from an undiverse ideology. I don't know if there's anyone in the room in the meetings that ever says, maybe we ought to think about that. I don't know if that's a good idea. And I don't, doesn't appear to me as an outside citizen that that occurs at all. And so from that, we get bad policy. So we get the pride flag flying from our flagpole for a month, which my understanding is, I don't know if it's illegal, but it's against state code. You get Easter Sundays being left out of calendars, and you get the DEI committee, which I don't feel is, should be necessary. As a good citizen, you should be doing those outreach. I know all my neighbors, they're all different people. Imran Hader is one of my neighbors. We've had great conversations at the playground. So I would call for a defunding of the DEI committee. I don't think, I didn't know tonight it was going to be pushed forward to a committee. I don't think that should happen. You mentioned the League of Cities, the president saying we don't have funding, taxpayers isn't going to supply all the money we need. I think this is something we don't need to go forward with. My time's running out, but you all know Ben West. Ben West was instrumental in getting the DEI committee pushed out of Clackamas County. And his quote was, "We believed it was really important to focus on merit, fairness, and equity, and not to racialize the workplace or the county." Thank you.
Okay. Before you go, does anyone have any questions for Court?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to respond to what you said. If this is an appropriate time to do that, are we okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. First of all, I am a person of color. I may not look it. Some may say that I don't qualify because I don't look the part. But let me tell you about myself. My mother was a full-blood Indian. I grew up near the Pine Ridge Reservation in South Dakota. My grandmother was a survivor of the Wounded Knee massacre. We were extremely poor. The only reason I was able to go to college was because I was on a Bureau of Indian Affairs grant. We were considered the other. We went to a, whatever grade school we chose to go to because we lived in something called no man's land, which was the Indian settlement. And nobody wanted us in their school district. It was, like I said before, I went to college on a Bureau of Indian Affairs grant. If it wasn't for the grace of a teacher who saw me as a person and not as the other, I would have never been able to leave western South Dakota. I would have been stuck there. And that's the point. I don't look it. My dad was white. My mother was full-blood. My mother was treated badly her entire life. Because of that, she became a very, very militant and radical member of the American Indian Movement. And then as she grew older, she became one of the leading members of the Rapid City, South Dakota Human Rights Commission. But again, I don't look the part. But I'll tell you what, it's right here. And it's right here. And I've really wrestled with everything with what DEI, because those are my immutable traits. And yet, by the same token, I know that if I had not had someone say to me, I'm, that person is smart, I'm going to look beyond where she came from, I'm going to look beyond those elements of who she are, I would not have been able to be where I am. And I can tell you that every decision I make, as a city councillor, I am making with my heart and I'm making with my head. So even though I don't look the part, I get this. And I believe that Wilsonville benefits from all of the vision of DEI. And I know that DEI is under a lot of scrutiny right now because it's really easy to say it's not right. But I think that this is an opportunity for Wilsonville to say, we are going to keep DEI and we are going to elevate it into something more and actually bring it into our code because we truly believe in it. Not because everybody else is getting rid of it, but because we believe that that's part of what sets us apart and makes us special. Because I don't ever want a student at Wilsonville High School that doesn't look the part, but doesn't have the opportunity to feel like they're the other. And to have the opportunity that, to feel like there's inclusion. We have 14% of our population here that is Hispanic, and a lot of them are living in the shadows. You know, some of our other community members don't necessarily look the part either, and they may be living next door to you or three doors down, and you don't know it, and you don't know what they're living with. DEI is an opportunity for them to be able to feel like I am not the other. I know what that feels like. But I don't have to walk around with the color in my face every day. Yeah, this is not blonde hair, it's gray. My hair is usually really dark, but as I'm getting older, I'm 66-years-old, it's getting gray. But I grew up that way. And so I wrestled with the fact that, do we want to make it a standing committee? I've really wrestled with that a lot. And I believe we do. By the way, I've thought, no, we shouldn't. Yes, we should. But after I've really thought through it, I do support making it a standing committee. And I say that with a lot of thought, not because I'm trying to be status quo, but because I really believe in my heart and my head that it's the right thing to do for Wilsonville. But thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I will add that I am totally white. My parents were Irish.
Mine too.
It's pretty clear. I get sunburned really easily.
Take on that.
But when you see those pictures on there, the bottom of the newsletter, I suppose it's one way for us to try to get to know people, and people say hi to me, and it's really nice because I can meet them in the grocery store. But it's kind of funny when you have this all-woman council because you can pick up that some people think it's some kind of a cute thing. I mean, it's not like somebody decided to form an all-women's law firm, an all-women's dress shop or something. They were elected at different times. They ran for office and they were elected. And about my friend Ben West, who called me the other day, and he said, I hope we can still be friends. I want to still be friends. That wording that you read, that Zoe read about where it came to the part about the immutable traits, that got in there after a long discussion with Ben West. Who is one of the voters who unanimously adopted creating this committee? And we spent, did people know about it? Well, again, we try. We use, you can't go knock on everyone's door. I would love to have more people have time, but I know it's very busy, and I know that it's very difficult for everybody to come to these meetings. Everybody has a lot to do. So it's really difficult to get everybody down here. But we did go through all the various hearings. And another thing, speaking of Ben West, he wanted to be and was appointed the chair of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. And in the Resolution 2820, to adopt that, which was a very interesting process, again, we appointed committee, people from the community. You advertise, you ask people to apply, doing our best. Be great if more different people volunteered and came to all the hearings, but maybe we can keep getting it more diverse. But I have a resolution here, it's in Resolution 2820, which is when the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan was adopted, which is a different document, but it's been very interesting to find out who is here in Wilsonville, what's going on, what are the costs, what's, it's been a very deep-dive demographic look, and how could you make it more equitable? It's very complicated. They gave us several different steps, the consultants we worked with. But I just want to raise one, talk about one phrase here. In this resolution, whereas during the Planning Commission's deliberation of the plan, Planning Commission members expressed a desire for a committee other than a city-appointed body to review with a lens toward promoting equity and inclusion, future city plans, projects, and other city issues, and the Planning Commission intends to consider a resolution recommending to the city such a, to the city council, such a committee or body. I actually read that one. A desire for a committee or other city-appointed body. So that was, the date of that was in, trying to find where the date is here, 15th of June 2020, and I think Zoe referenced that. So it's been a long road. We've tried. We also had listening sessions where we invited all of the community. We had, it was COVID, it was a very crowded Zoom call. We had a facilitator ask people a lot of questions. And it didn't come about by one person. It really came about organically from different people wanting it. And here we are, and now we're getting more input on it. And I thank you for your input and ideas that we can keep trying to make it better. Our next speaker or card is Elizabeth Garcia-Davidson.
She's passing.
She's where?
She's going to pass there, so go to the next speaker.
Oh, passing, I'm sorry. For some reason, I didn't understand what you said.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Next one, Stephen Hunter.
Shalom, ladies. I implore you to not approve this, what are you calling it? You know, the ordinance number 893, especially without a full council presence. This is such, you know, a weighty matter. I think there should be five people here to vote on this, discuss this. I want to touch on where we are nationally with DEI. Perhaps you missed the headline on CNN, which is no right-wing rag. But what is DEI and why is it dividing America? We are seeing nationally, the private sector run away from DEI as fast as they can. Ford Motor Company dumping DEI. Harley-Davidson dumping DEI. Tractor Supply Company dumping DEI. The list goes on. John Deere, you know, we are formerly an agricultural community. But these companies have found that it is not to their advantage to waste money on DEI. I'm asking you folks to please do not institutionalize and budgetize DEI, no matter how many years you want to go back. We are in the present, right now. You guys are having to make the decision. Don't blame it on anybody else. Don't go back two years, four years, five years. You know, the here and now is, DEI is failing. Boeing Corporation, which you're very close to us right here, is being investigated to see how much DEI has hampered their production, productivity, and safety. We are well aware of the Alaska Airlines that avoided by just a few hundred feet a disaster over Portland when a part of its fuselage, you know, departed the aircraft. You know, it's, you know, I love the stories. And for anybody to overcome, you know, your past and so on and so forth, that's great. But you're not the first. Look at Clarence Thomas and his history, where he came from and where he is today. Look at Ben Carson, where he came from, what he went through, and where he is today. It is not government's job to raise the children. The parent's job is to raise the children. You know, the best thing that government can do is step aside, stop placing people in boxes. We have a race box, we have a gender box, we have a preference box. Stop looking at people that way. We are all people. We are all brown to a different shade. Hire people based on merit. Promote people based on merit. Retain people based on merit, not because of what box they are filling. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. And we did pass the three-minute point, so...
Could you speak up a little bit? I'm sorry.
Oh, I just said, okay, thank you for that. So now I want to ask, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hunter? Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, facts are a tough thing to argue with, aren't they?
Oh, let me, I...
Oh, you do have to go ahead.
Quick response. I think that, you know, that we often find ourselves when, and it goes back to the division of our city and, yeah...
You're going to have to speak up a little bit.
Yeah, facts.
Thank you.
You've spoken facts, and I think one of the challenges that we have is that, you know, we are trying to serve the city overall. And so I want you to know, first of all, I really hear you and I appreciate where you're coming from and your perspective, because I know that it's a perspective that is shared with some others.
You're hearing me, but you're not listening.
That's not true. That's not true. I still, I may or may not agree with you on certain subjects. This happens to be something where I do disagree with you. But I really do respect where you're coming from, and I'm really, really glad that you came here and spoke with where your thoughts are.
Well, I'm glad I came too.
Great.
You know, the difference between government and private industry, private industry has to show a profit. If government is losing money, all they do is they take more money. Stop taking our money for a flawed social experiment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Bob Renfro. And full disclosure, this is my husband.
I didn't know you were going to say that.
Well, I just want to be clear. He wanted to come.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. And for the record, my name is Bob Renfro, and I've lived in Wilsonville for 17 years now, and my contact information is on file. I'd like to express my thanks this evening for the work of Wilsonville's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee and the City Council for supporting their work. At first glance, it might appear that Wilsonville is not a particularly diverse community. But if you have attended any sessions of the speaker series that the committee has so thoughtfully curated, you would see that Wilsonville is a much more diverse place than you might have thought. Through this series, we've heard firsthand accounts of those who have fled their home countries due to violence, the everyday experiences of members of religious minorities such as Islam, Judaism, and the Baha'i faith, and the daily challenges faced by differently-abled people. These are all people who are part of our community. I applaud the work of Wilsonville's DEI committee and support its establishment as a standing committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a card for Imran Hader.
All right. Advocate, that is the main word I want you to think about, advocate. So I want to tell you about a bad diaper situation, not for me, it was for my son. We go to a lot of parks. I don't wear diapers. One of my kids still wears diapers. It wasn't in Wilsonville, but it was a park, and I had to change his diaper on a stroller. So I just want you to imagine that scene. It was not pretty. And he was moving all around and kicking and stuff, and there's a point here. So basically, my wife and I look at each other, a lot of places we go, and we're like, I wish they had a changing table. Or she nurses one of our kids, and she wishes that there was like a place to nurse, you know? And these are just different public places you go, even airports. So advocate. Who's going to advocate for there to be three-foot-wide hallways or changing tables or, you know, a place to nurse your child in private so that you don't feel like you're uncomfortable nursing your child in public, right? And I wouldn't say that that's a waste of time or effort or money. I think that that's, not all politicians, not all citizens have children. They may not advocate for changing tables or nursing stations, right? But a DEI committee throughout our history has advocated for things like that to occur. Case in point, one of the things that I'm really proud of is, we've advocated for mobi mats. If you've gone to Florence, Oregon, to Honeyman State Park, they have mobi mats that go out to the dunes, and it's not very far. It's like 30 yards, but they can go out on the sand. Who's they? People with small children with strollers or people in wheelchairs, for example. Or me, who tore my Achilles, and I was on a scooter, and I would, that year I didn't get to go very far on the sand because it was too hard. Those are the situations that DEI committees for decades have advocated for. And in Wilsonville, hopefully, we'll get mobi mats at parks or events, and that will help more people be able to attend. So those are just some examples of, I think, some things that people don't think about, the details in some of the work.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you tell me... Can you tell me the name of that device you're talking about, Mobi mats?
Zoe could probably tell you more, but do you want to answer?
It's called a Mobi mat. That's a brand name of a product that you would see at Lincoln City or in Seaside. It's, I don't know exactly what material it is, but it basically makes the surface easier or flat, maneuverable.
For wheels, okay.
For someone that has challenges with mobility.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
So when you're walking on grass or bark dust, which we've done plenty of times with strollers, it just, it sucks. You can't do it. You have to lift the stroller, lift the child out, leave the stroller one side, go somewhere else. And that's definitely not the community's problem, but it's also not a great experience for all our community members, you know? And that's kind of where we get back to this juxtaposition. It's like, is it your issue? Do you care if your neighbor who doesn't have a person in your house that's in a wheelchair or stroller? Maybe you don't care. But I think we should. That's what makes us a community here, or any community great, is that we care about people in wheelchairs. For example, somebody in our committee who's awesome can go into any restaurant or any store and shop if they have ramps. If they don't have ramps for that person to get in, then she can't shop or eat at that restaurant. And that sucks for her. And I feel bad about that, even though I'm not in the wheelchair.
Thank you. And I did learn a lot more about that through this committee. I just wanted to, to your point, I happen to have the vision pulled up here of the committee. The Wilsonville diversity, and it sounds a little bit like what you're saying, that the Wilsonville, or excuse me, the mission, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee serves to connect Wilsonville to the diverse perspectives and lived experiences of its people. We advocate for equitable access and opportunity for every community member. We identify barriers to participation and inclusion and pursue programs, policies, and partnerships and ideas that remove those barriers. So I think you were explaining some of the things that have been identified that had they not been noticed, would not have been taken care of.
Yeah, there's just no, there's no voice that's, like, I can marry my wife because at some point federal legislation was passed for interracial marriage. I wasn't around for that. It was in 1967, somewhere around that time. Don't quote me on that. Somebody advocated for me to be able to marry her because I'm a different ethnicity from a different part of the world, and she's European and white. That's an example of somebody who moved the needle for me. So that's been going on for a long time. This case is not everybody can go to the parks and events that we have in Wilsonville. So if we have mats for people with strollers or wheelchairs, for example, there might be others. That's something that other people can think of so that when somebody shows up, they don't feel like that was the worst day of their life and they have to turn around and go home because there's not a way for them to experience that.
Thank you.
Right? Those are just examples, I think, that people need to consider. It's misunderstood, a lot of the work we do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I have one more speaker card, Dina Oakes.
Hi. My name is Dina Oakes. I live here in Wilsonville. My address is on the card. I didn't plan on talking tonight. I didn't know this was the hearing tonight. I'm probably gonna make a lot of people out here mad. But we come up here and we ask you to listen to us. And our complaint is we're not heard. And then I will not stand for not listening to members of our community have a DEI committee to represent everybody in Wilsonville, not just people that look like me, who get to walk around as a white woman and never have to be in a wheelchair, God willing, and benefit from the things that this committee does. People have spoken about the good things and how their lives have been impacted by it. And as a community, we need to listen. We need to listen to everybody. And I'm really mad that anyone would actually ask you to vote against this. I'm gonna ask you to vote for it with four people. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like, oh, whoops, we forgot the thing. We've gotta ask, I forgot to...
I can't answer anything about DEI.
I would like to respond to what you just said because it triggered something in me. So I know I've mentioned before that my husband recently passed away. But in the months before he did, he went from being a very busy, very well, highly-employed architect to being a man on a walker. And that was a big shift. And he only did that for a few months before he passed. But the very first time that he said, "Let's go out in public," I, in his, with his walker, we named it Hot Wheels, we went into Fred Meyer. And Fred Meyer tries to be accommodating with the wheelchairs and the motorized and everything, but he had his walker. And he was treated so badly by some of the staff, they were kind of like, move out of the way. Literally, someone said, "Move out of the way." And he, for the very first time in his life, said, "I've never felt like that before. I felt so marginalized." And you know what? He wouldn't go back into the grocery store again. You know, it doesn't take a lot when somebody's thought about, thought of as the other to make them go, "I'm just not gonna go there." I have to wonder if that's why some members of our community are invisible. They've chosen to be invisible because they're afraid of the price might pay that if they're too visible. And I wish that we lived in a world where none of this was the case. And I knew a lot about DEI committees being defunded. A lot of it's for budget. A lot of it is because there's pressure from certain groups, whether they're conservative or whatever, that are talking about it not being, you know, something that they see their customers wanting anymore. There's a various number of reasons. But from my own experience, and now just thinking about my husband's experience, it was like, oh, that a light bulb went on. Because mine is in the past. His was just a few months ago. And he never went back in the grocery store again. So thank you, Dina. I appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do, okay, let me take a moment here. I want to find out if there's anyone on Zoom or any phone calls. Okay, so we don't have anyone else needing to, wanting to testify. Does any, and forgive me by restating these things. We have to do it this way. Does any councillor need anything clarified regarding the testimony of any of the speakers? We don't have anyone on Zoom. Does the staff have anything further to add to the record at this time? Or does the City Council have any additional questions for staff?
There is one thing that I would like to just reemphasize that I did not mention earlier. We had talked about the fact that there are city staff or committees that come to the DEI Committee requesting letters of support. And this can be required with some of the grant applications that they submit to Metro or the state to have that equity lens or come from a DEI Committee. So depending on the wording of the grant application, but just to note that having that sort of lens is often something that we need to show to our agencies that we apply for grants. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear as well.
Thank you.
That there are other elements that are important for this committee.
And I saw that mentioned in the staff report, and I'd asked you to send us a copy of some of those letters that have been instrumental in the city receiving grants for things like playgrounds because there are entities that do not want to fund unless they know that you're paying attention to these things. Okay, so any other questions for the staff? Hearing no further questions and everyone having testified, I hereby declare... I just want to ask on the procedure, because this is our first hearing. We're going to have a second hearing.
Yeah. Mayor, as long as there's no member of council that's asking, making a motion to continue the public hearing, you are entitled to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Okay, hearing no further questions and everyone having testified, I hereby declare this public hearing closed on September 5th at 9:39 PM. It is now time for council to consider the ordinance number 893 on first reading. And before we go forward, I would, to the next step, I would like the city attorney, and by the way, the city attorney to clarify for the audience how our charter works on the first and second hearings.
On the first and second readings?
Readings, excuse me, yes.
Correct, yes. So our city charter lays out that any ordinance must be adopted through two separate readings. The first reading has a public hearing tied to it. That's what we're doing tonight. And then a second reading is held at a later council meeting, typically the next council meeting. There are exceptions where it can be done the same night, but typically our process is to do the two separate readings. So the public hearing is tonight. That's when council takes testimony on the first reading. And then there will be a vote on the first reading. And then assuming that the vote is for adoption, then a second reading will be held at the next council meeting for the council to again consider the ordinance for adoption.
And what is the difference between the first reading and the second reading, both at our city and in other cities? There's a public testimony.
The only difference is the public hearing. That at the second meeting, there is no public hearing.
Right, so I just wanted to clarify that. That is how our charter works. So we're having two readings. At the first reading, we have public testimony. At the second reading, we don't have public testimony. And I've inquired as to why this is. And one of the reasons, the main reason is it gives us a chance to, if there's something that we found out, some new information that we didn't know about that came forward tonight, we have a time to explore that for our decision-making at the next reading. Correct? It is now time for the council to consider the ordinance on number 893 on first reading. Do I have a motion on ordinance number 893?
I move to adopt ordinance number 893 on first reading.
Is second. Okay. Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to point out that, highlight what was in our executive summary, that the DEI committee members, they're chosen so that they can work together and as a committee, think broadly to represent the committee, our community as a whole. And that this committee partners with the other city boards and with other community organizations and with city departments. And from what I've seen in the last couple of years, they, I think they're instrumental in communication within our town. And I like to see that continue. Thank you.
Question from the board?
No.
Excuse me, for our procedure, and I'm not singling you out, we have to follow the procedure of the hearing. We already closed the public hearing.
Question, you can't answer, ask a question?
No.
Not at this point in the hearing.
There's no dialogue.
Thank you for, thank you. Councillor Akervall. Council President Akervall.
Thank you. I've observed the work of the DEI Committee. We've covered a lot of the community events. There's also been a lot of feedback on some of the policy work, which has been mentioned today in some of the, some of the comments made. But, you know, you don't get a poster for the policy work. We have the great posters in the hall for the events. But we don't get a poster for all the policy work. But I am seeing this committee make our community stronger. And I'm very grateful because that's why I'm here. I mean, that's why I showed up to try to do this work. I care about the community. I'm aware of some of the news reports about companies changing their DEI structure. I guess background, my background is in data analytics, and I work for an HR analytics space. We have several thousand clients. So I'm also aware of more of the large coverage research in this space. There's been a lot of true research that shows diverse teams are better at making decisions. Last May 2023, Pew Research released a report noting that the majority of employed adults actually say that focusing, increasing DEI at work is mainly a good thing. It's a good idea. That's from Pew Research. McKinsey, so these aren't small names, reported that corporations identifying as more diverse and inclusive are 35% more likely to outperform their competitors. We see that retention is higher. We see that innovation is richer. I don't believe that this is about being popular with one group or another. I don't believe that this is a fad. I think it's the right thing to do because, again, I'm here to try to help serve the community, to try to make our community stronger. I think that it helps us collectively make better decisions to serve our community more completely. I think that's what I've been elected to do. So that makes this a pretty clear choice for me. I appreciate everyone coming and talking about this because I do think that conversation is important. I think hearing the array of perspectives tonight is important. But I feel, I feel confident in my decision knowing that my North Star, that my grounding is that I want a stronger community, that I want people to feel belonging here. I want an efficient, a functional, a well-run. I want to have good operations. And I think we've got some, we've got some facts that show that this is a good direction for us to head in, in order to accomplish that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councillor Dunwell. I wanted to say a few words and, you know, how do you get elected to the City Council? You come up with a crazy idea to run for office. And so when I ran for mayor, I was motivated by some things. And I wasn't quite sure I was going to run because it takes a lot of time. And like most everybody else, I had a full-time job. The Wilsonville spokesman called and said, "Hey, we heard you're gonna run for office. We're gonna run a story at 5 o'clock." It was different people who were there. "Do you want to give us a statement or not? Because we're gonna run the story." And I hadn't even finished deciding. But I called my office and said, "I'm off for the day. I'm not gonna, I'm taking the rest of the day off." And I made some decisions, and they called and interviewed me, and the story came out that, whenever that, shortly after that. And it showed what I had told the man. I said, "I want to help make Wilsonville an anti-racist community." And that was a term that we heard a lot then. You don't hear as much now. But, and I also had, and I'm, it's been, it's been a good experience, a very, a real honor and a lot of work. And then when I started doing the work, I started learning things that came my way that I didn't know about. When I was, I've interviewed everybody who applies for the boards and commissions, except I did not interview everybody who applied for the DEI Committee because there were 45 people, and I just couldn't do it. And that was just gonna take too much time. And so there was a committee that helped cut that down in half. In fact, I just heard from a woman who did not get selected all those years ago. And she wanted to be on the committee. Maybe she will apply again because she has a family member who has some neurodiversity issues and pointed out some things in a different angle that are a little bit like what Imran Hyder mentioned about spaces and are they designed in a way that people can interact with them? That's just another one that somebody wants to participate and bring those ideas forward. There are probably some more ideas that we haven't, that we haven't addressed. I don't go to all the meetings.
haven't addressed. I don't go to all the meetings, but I welcome hearing these ideas. I welcome hearing, are there ways that we're blocking out thinking and discussions that people can't feel heard? How can we open those things up? How can we make our conversations more open? One of the men, one of the young men I interviewed told me that when he was in junior high, had moved here as a, as a, as a young boy, and he was a person of color. And in junior high, somebody had a new iPhone, and they're passing it all around and looking at it, and he wanted to see it, and the, one of the kids said, you don't need to see it, you're never gonna be able to afford one of these. And he, that has not ever happened to me, maybe because of how I look. But he didn't say anything, and he thought to himself, he just wasn't, he just didn't strike back. But later, he had a degree, and a master's degree in a high-tech firm, and he has a cellphone. But that made me really sad. I heard several things from people who wanted to join the committee and find ways to have those kinds of things not happen. You want to hear how the community reacts? When, I just looked it up on the, on the website, it was December 13th, 2022, on our website, antisemitic flyers, hate speech, should be reported. The phone is ringing off the hook, and this has happened, I believe, twice. And it's throughout Wilsonville, all of a sudden, early in the morning, again, this didn't happen to me, people went out in their driveways and found little Ziploc bags with pebbles in them, and a note with antisemitic messaging thrown in their driveway, and it was scary, it frightened people. They, they felt like they could not put their candelabra in their window. And this is the kind of question that they're running, well, what is Wilsonville going to do? What are you going to do? How can we live here with these things happening? We did, we did post that hate speeches of any kind is simply unacceptable, must not be tolerated. We learned how to call into the Anti-Defamation League. This happened again, maybe a year ago, when somebody defaced some nice playground equipment with antisemitic statements and graphics. And people are understandably very upset. It was over the weekend, and I appreciate that members of the park staff came out on a Sunday and worked on that, because it's very upsetting to people. Who are they going to call? And so I hope that this committee can help, can continue to help people think. And maybe, maybe they were, maybe somebody learned that at school, or they learned it from a friend and thought it would be okay. But maybe, maybe through these kinds of processes, whoever that was that did that might think twice and think how that might feel to somebody. So because of my experience and what I've learned, and what people have said to me and the interactions I've had, I am going to vote for this, making this a standing committee. I think it's been very useful in helping the city develop good policies, think about barriers that we might accidentally have in place, that we didn't know they were there. But these discussions are ways to find those out. And I think there's a lot more that we can learn to be better than we are today. So with that, if there's no hearing more, no more discussion, I will call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes 4-0. Do we have any city manager business?
Nothing to nightmare.
Any legal business?
Nothing to nightmare.
Meeting's adjourned at 9:54. Thank you.